If the town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board, please join me for the pledge first.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Thanks, everyone. And just as a reminder, just as a reminder, this meeting, we had a March meeting got delayed with the town trying to set up the Zoom meeting format for a few weeks. So we wound up having the March meeting on April, on our normal April time slot. So this meeting is basically our April, normal April agenda. It's not a special meeting in the sense that some applicant asked for it. And I'll start off by, I have to read that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's March 13th, 2020 Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call.
There will be a roll call.
There will be a roll call of the board members, and I'll do that first. Just say if you're present, Peter?
Yes.
Ben?
Present.
Nicole?
Rocco, I'm here.
Rocco, I heard you. Bob?
Here.
And Joan?
Present.
Okay, we have the full board. So there has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noted, noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the doors of the town hall, as the town bulletin board is within the building and not presently available to the public. We've emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. All right, first up on the agenda is Stewart Shop at 2245 South Road, a seeker review, special use permit review, and site plan review for construction of a new Stewart Shop. This has been on the board before, but who is here to represent Stewart's tonight?
Chad Fowler from Stewart Shops.
So can you briefly, briefly tell us what has, what changes have been made since the previous presentation?
Of course. I do want to thank the board and the town for working and having this meeting. We do deal with a lot of municipalities, and that is not the case everywhere. I just want to let you know that it is appreciated. I am here with Richard DeAndrea from Mazer Consulting to discuss any traffic issues, and I'm here with Alec Glad also from Cuddy Fader to discuss seeker. I'm going to bring up the aerial. I know that you're familiar with the, with the site. It is a current, a closed restaurant and a car wash, and it is almost fully developed. There's only 8% green. It's mostly blacktop and building. We think that this is a convenient store. We already have four stores in the town, so the town is familiar with Stewart's in how we deal with the community and try to fit in as a, as a neighbor in any of our shops. To give you a product, product, excuse me, project overview, I'll bring up the site plan. We are proposing a 3,700 square foot convenience store with four fueling dispensers under one canopy. One of the fueling dispensers will have diesel, just on one, so there'll be two pumping points for diesel. The flow of the site, we positioned the building and canopy where we have a good flow off the, off Route 9 and on South Gate. We did look at many different configurations. This is what works best, as we discussed with the town and board prior and other meetings. The position of the curb cuts of the one on Route 9 is very close to where it is today existing for the restaurant, pushed a little farther away from the intersection, just preferred by DOT. And then South Gate Drive, that entrance is also pushed away from Route 9 much more than it is today. And there was a question on, could that entrance be moved even further? Well, South Gate is a hill going up, so it really makes the entrance into the Stewart's steeper, almost too steep, if we push it farther away. So where we're showing it, we think is the best position for that entrance on the side.
No, it's not.
All right.
We do have conceptual approval from New York State DOT, and we have also met with the zoning board, and the last meeting, they did request that the tanks get moved from the South Gate Drive side of the building to, away from the residences. So we have done that, and this plan does show that. We have shown the tanker flow, so that does, we do have adequate flow to those gas tanks with the truck. Just to continue with the overview of the site, we have parking on the front and right side of the building. The door is on the front of the, the building, and delivery side is towards South Gate Drive. So our delivery door is on the left rear of the building. We are proposing 25% landscape, so substantially more than the current project that's there now, the restaurant and car wash. And just some Stewart's facts, we have, you know, 336 stores, eight in Vermont, the rest are in New York. We are family and employee owned. We do produce our own ice cream and have our own dairy out of Saratoga Springs. We pride ourselves in the efficiency and also the, the training of our partners, or again, owners of the, of Stewart's, partial owners, owners of almost 40% at this point. And we do training, we take it very seriously. We even go beyond what's required by, for instance, state or federal, and I'm speaking directly towards the gasoline part of the, the business, the training we have for emergencies, whether it be a gas bill, or another fuel emergency, or anything on the site. Currently, the federal regulations are training once when you're hired. We go way beyond that. We go quarterly, so it's renewed every quarter with all of the partners, just so that we know that we're as good as we can be on any emergencies. And we've learned this, we have 336 shops, we have to be good at it. We consider ourselves part of the community. We do give back quite a few, I won't give you a percentage, but up to $5 million, I think it was last year, including the holiday match that you may have heard about. So that is something that we pride ourselves in, is giving back to the local communities. We did, I will bring up a landscaping plan that, the zoning board did request some screening. So we did add trees along South Gate, some blue spruce, and to the rear also, again, to try to shield from the residences. That was the intent of the trees requested by the zoning board. Those were the two main changes from the last meeting, was the zoning board changes, was moving the tanks and adding the landscaping. There was a question about lighting and one of the correspondents earlier. We do show LED fixtures on all pole lights. The whole exterior lighting is LED. It's very controllable. The planning board did request a, a lower, a softer color, I would call it, 4,000 Kelvin temperature, which is more of a yellowish color than the bright, bright white that we have in some other stores. We are willing to do that, and we also can meet the lighting code for the town. I know there was a question about, it was a little bright at some of the property lines. That can be adjusted with the LED, so we are planning to do that.
Okay, great.
That's what I have. I was going to hand it over to Richard to talk about some traffic and ask her any other questions.
All right, thanks. We'll get to some questions later. Go ahead, Richard.
I'll bring up the site plan for Richard.
Hi, everybody. Rich DeAndrea from Mazer Consulting, a traffic consultant for the project. Just going to give you a quick overview on where we are with the traffic and the things. So our initial traffic study was submitted, or dated on December 12th, and it really focused on the intersection of Route 9 and South Gate Drive, the intersection to the north of that, Neptune, Neptune Road, as well as site access intersections. That study was reviewed by the town's traffic consultant. There was two separate comment letters on that, the most recent being from March 20th, that we responded to, I'm sorry, that's when we responded to the latest comments from the town's. And generally, we've determined, we've concluded from the traffic study that there's really no significant traffic impacts. The town's traffic consultant, recent correspondence from April 17th, basically agreed with that conclusion. I'm sure they'll address that tonight. But just to touch on some other things that have, of note since the last meeting, I think, not that this is new, but there, you know, there will be a new sidewalk constructed along the site front edge along Route 9, with new sidewalk curb ramps, ADA compliant, and a pedestrian crossing across South Gate Drive. That'll give access to the bus stop located south, on Route 9, just south on Route 9, south of South Gate Drive. As Chad had mentioned, DOT did issue a conceptual approval back in January, and they did, we did receive some more detailed comments from them end of February that have been, I believe have been addressed at this point, but will be continued to be reviewed as part of a final highway work permit application that would be required for the driveway to Route 9 and the sidewalk improvements. One of the things we addressed in our, in our last response to comments was site distance. We looked at the site distance from both site access locations and determined that the, there's adequate site distance to meet the DOT standards for, or criteria for intersection site distance.
Got it. Hold on there a second, Rich. You have the mic problem. You try again.
I was discussing queuing. Is that where we, where you all were?
There we go.
Yeah, okay. So queuing on South Gate Drive was one of the things that we looked at, the concern being that the distance from the intersection to the driveway and the ability to clear the queue and traffic from the driveway. What we determined is that at, during peak times, there may be instances where the queue will extend beyond the driveway on South Gate Drive, which would result in vehicles queuing on, on the driveway itself and into the site. But the way the site is laid out, there's sufficient room to handle approximately three vehicles queued at the driveway, which we anticipate would clear with each cycle of the signal. So we don't see that as a, as a major issue right now. We also looked at accident data at the quest of the town's traffic consultant, that we had received the latest accident data from the DOT for the most recent 2019 period. So that gave us five years of accident data. We looked at, compared that to statewide accident rates for the intersection, and it then determined that the intersection currently is below the statewide average for accident rates of the intersection, and therefore is not really a significant accident location. I think that's pretty much the stuff that we touched on recently, and if there's any other questions, we can address them as we go. I think we're going to hand off to Alec to address some of the seeker items.
All right, thanks.
Hi, good evening. This is Alec Glad from Cuddy and Fader, and as part of Stewart's comprehensive February submission, we included what we called an EAF Part II addendum, which is just a written narrative explaining and expanding upon certain questions contained in the short EAF Part II, which warranted further explanation based on some of the responses in the EAF Part I, which we had submitted to the board. And this narrative is intended to assist the board in its influence in completing the seeker review for this project, and we believe it illustrates that there is a lack of a significant environmental impact, and I just want to briefly hit on three major points. So question one is whether the proposed action will create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations, and we submit that the answer to this question is no. The proposed action is a permitted special permit in the highway business zoning district. The BH zoning district's stated purpose is to provide areas for commercial establishments that typically require direct auto access and visibility from a major arterial highway, while limiting the size of the business and commercial facilities to a scale that's in keeping with the character of the nearby residential districts. And we think Stewart's proposed 3,900 and, or 3,696 square foot, sorry, convenience store and self-service gasoline pumps contemplate such a use. And importantly as well, it is well established by the courts in New York that the inclusion of the use in a zoning law as a special permit use is a legislative determination that the use is in harmony with the community's general zoning plan and will not affect the neighborhood. And although variances are required for this project, they do not materially conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning, because the variances are a function of the relatively small size of the lot, which is .9 acres, and the lot is within an area of Route 9 where there are a number of undersized parcels. The two acre minimum appears to have been enacted after these parcels were created, and further note, meaningful redevelopment of the site can occur without seeking any variances, but thankfully for you, the planning board, this is a ZBA issue, similarly with concerns about precedent. That's another issue for the ZBA, but in any case, the town's already granted variances from the separation requirement, so the precedent already exists. Question two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? And again, we submit the answer to this is no. The proposed action won't actually result in a change of use, since the property has been previously used as another motor vehicle service facility. The site contains a closed car wash facility, and the code classifies gasoline filling stations and car wash facilities as the same use, that is, a motor vehicle service facility. In addition, the proposed project is significantly reducing the intensity of use on site. The project site currently is developed with over 10,000 square feet of buildings, and it's covered 65% by pavement, and Stewart's is proposing to reduce this existing scale of development by demolishing those buildings and constructing a total of 3,856 square feet of buildings, which is almost a 7,000 square foot reduction, as well as reducing the pavement footprint from 65% to 40%, 47%, while increasing green space from the existing 8% to the proposed 24% as illustrated on the site plans. And the third major point that I want to address is, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? And again, we also submit no. The setting of the project site is important. It's located along an existing commercial corridor that abuts Route 9, a major six-lane divided highway at this location. There's a commercial deli located just south of the proposed site. There's a Red Lobster chain restaurant to the north. There's a car dealership friendly forward directly across Route 9, and there's an office building located to the north and west. And again, as I noted, Stewart's is proposing to reduce the scale of existing development while simultaneously increasing the green space and reducing the amount of total pavement area. And I think what is also more important is that Stewart's site improvements will be better oriented relative to the nearby residential districts than the existing conditions. The existing drive-through car wash facility faces the residential district, and this car wash will be removed. Stewart's will place its proposed self-service gasoline pumps and tank as far away from, as possible from the residential district, and they will be screened by the building, as well as the landscaping that was added, which further ameliorates any impacts. And lastly, while I do maintain that this is more of a ZBA issue, the legislative history materials submitted by Keenan Bean recently conclusively show that the purpose of incorporating the 500-foot separation requirement was because of concerns about noise and light impacts, and had nothing to do with fire and safety concerns. Fire and safety concerns were raised by public members, but that is not why the town board incorporated this requirement into the code. And the fire department has been commenting on Stewart's application, and they have not raised any concerns. But to the extent it's relevant to the planning board's review, and the point I'm trying to make is that the way the site is oriented, with the building and additional screening being located between the residences and the pumps, and the pumps being as far away on the site as possible from the adjacent, adjacent residential district, mitigates any noise and light impacts from the site. Also, it's important to remember that the Stewart's site is at a significantly lower grade in elevation than the nearby residential district, which further separates the uses both physically and visually. And then, so in sum, we think there's no impact under seeker, but actually, the project is an improvement to this developed but underutilized and diminishing commercial site. And I will just also note that we are in receipt of the stormwater agreement and easement forms from CPL. So I'll turn it back to the board and its consultants, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Alec. At this point, I'll move to Kristen for comments.
Okay, thank you for the project overview. I think most of my little intro was going, was actually covered already. The applicant did appear before the ZBA for a preliminary discussion. As you know, there is, there are a number of variances that are being sought by the applicant, and one in particular about the proximity of the proposed action near the residential parcel. The ZBA did have several comments, again, about screening, which the applicant has responded to. The board should discuss whether or not they feel it's sufficient, or have that discussion with the applicant. Also, the storage tanks were removed from the southeastern portion of the site to the northern portion of the site, just west of the access from Route 9. And there, there was a comment that had been raised previously by a board member about concern about water in the area. The water that serves this district, actually since 1971, per our town water department supervisor, is actually all public-based. There are no known private wells in this area, so I just wanted to put that out there, because that was a recent inquiry by the board. And so the, the project's on for public hearing. This will be the first time the public hearing has been open. It's on for seeker review, special use permit review, and site plan review. Special use permit and site plan review are subject to review and approval by the planning board. In this particular case, again, this was a coordinated review for an unlisted action, so the planning board, in essence, would have to make a seeker determination prior to being, for the applicant to be able to go before the ZBA, for them to be able to make a decision about variances. So at this time, I also have Mark Petrow here, our traffic, town traffic consultant, and we have Don Beer, the project engineer.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Let me go to Don first. And Don, if you have a phone? Yep, got it. Never mind. Okay.
Yep, I'm in. I think, you know, most of our concerns have been covered. I think the only thing I didn't notice in the presentation was whether the applicant had had a discussion with the highway superintendent since the letter that he sent. I know they have their own opinion, but I didn't, couldn't tell whether or not they had had a discussion with the highway superintendent again. That's probably the biggest concern left, is whether the driveway should be moved.
All right, thanks, Don. I noticed topography issues there, too, with, and they've already moved, moved it back quite a bit, but let's take a look at that. And Mark from?
I'm a resident of this development. I live on South Gate Drive. My name is Marion Kozlowski.
Well, hold on a minute.
Hold on, Marion. The public hearing will be opened momentarily, but we're, we're not up to that point just yet, so we'll get to you, okay?
Mark, can you comment on traffic?
Yeah, not a problem. So my name is Mark Petrow from JMC, the town's traffic consultant. We did review this project. We provided four review letters in, in the process of this review. And our last comment letter, based on their last submission, they had addressed our previous comments that we had on this project. So just to reiterate some items from the, the letter, just the board should consider or discuss with the applicant about accessibility to the store from the sidewalk along Route 9A, and then also about the gas delivery operations and potential conflicts with the passenger vehicles or customers of the site.
All right, thank you, Mark. This is a, on for a public hearing, so I move that we open a public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any board members opposed? All right, the public hearing is open. We ask you to limit your comments to our three minutes, as usual, and I'll have Mike coordinate who.
Yep. So Marion, we'll let you go first. I also want to point out for folks that are on the phone and maybe not attending via Zoom, you can raise your hand, and I can see that by, by hitting star nine, and then we'll know that you want to speak. And you can also use the star six on your phone to mute and unmute yourself. But let's start with Marion, since I know she was.
All right, and please state your name as well, name and address, so we can get that for the record.
My name is Marion Kozlowski, and I live on 47 South Gate Drive. I have several concerns about Stewart Shop opening right next door to a convenience store that's been in existence 40-plus years. It is literally right next door, and the entrance, based on the, the layout displayed on the screen, there's going to be an entrance and exit on South Gate Drive, which is already a very difficult intersection to get through, to both go through the light, heading off South Gate, and to come from Route 9 onto South Gate. It's a tremendous traffic backlog with a very short traffic light. 16 seconds is the traffic light duration. In addition to that, the proposal to put gas pumps so close to a residential neighborhood is, is just beyond my comprehension. How that ever even got to this point where it's a proposal that's being considered is just unbelievable to me. I've been in this house since 1974, and it, it pains me to think that what was once a farm stand is now proposed to be a gas station. That's how long I've been here. I've been here since Sunny Ridge Farms was in that original location, and to classify a car wash as the same as a gas pump is just unbelievable. And it's, I, I am shocked that not more people on, in this development and on South Gate directly are so opposed to it. But I, I want to know how it even got to this point that it was, that it was even a proposal for gas pumps to be there.
All right, thanks for your comments, Marion.
There someone else?
Anyone else? Yep. Wish to comment on this application tonight?
I wish to comment on it, but I'm an attorney representing Sunoco Station, so I'd like to give any other residents an opportunity first.
All right. Any other residents in the area that wish to comment tonight? We've, I mean, we received a lot, a lot of letters from the area as well, so we'll note that.
I have a quick question. My name is Alan. I live on Channingville Road. How many feet is it from Route 9 to the, the new driveway to Stewart's?
I think the question was, how many feet is it from Route 9 to the, the new driveway on South Gate Road? Is that correct?
Right.
Yes. Mark, do you have that answer off the top of your head? Mark, do you have that answer off the top of your head?
The separation on South Gate Road, I believe, is 80 feet from the signal on Route 9, if that's the driveway in question.
Perhaps the applicant knows how far back it was moved from where it is currently?
80 feet is good. That's eight car lengths, approximately.
Eighty feet. I'm hearing 80 feet as a comment. Did you have anything further, Alan?
Yes. Are there going to be light poles along Route 9?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Are there going to be light poles along Route 9?
New light poles on Route 9? I don't believe that's in the plan. They're adding a sidewalk along Route 9 there.
That's good. And where's the sign going to be on Route 9?
The sign on the site plan is shown on the corner, so it's the southeast corner of the parcel.
Oh, okay.
I see it now.
Yeah.
And how big of a sign is that?
Can I ask, Chad, can you provide that dimension?
See if it's on the plans here.
He's getting it up there right now.
I think he can pull that up quick. Did you have any other comments?
No.
While he's doing that?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
There's the sign in the lower corner, if you can see that on your screen now.
Chad, do you have some dimensions?
Not really. Not really, but I see it.
How tall is that sign, Chad?
It's six feet tall by eight feet wide.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else that wishes to speak from the residential, or we can...
And if you're on a phone, I want to remind you that you can unmute yourself by pressing star six, and raise your hand by pressing star nine, and...
Hello?
There you go. Yeah?
Hello?
Yes. Who is this?
Oh, okay. I live in Oriel Drive, number five, from 1999. We are a family that have a handicapped daughter. She's 47 years old, and we use for her, because she live with us, and we use oxygen 24 hours a day, even in the car when we have to go out with her to the doctor. I just worry about, me and my husband, we live with her here, and we are very scared about all these things, you know, to the project they have, and we really don't want that, you know, don't want it to happen that, because I'm afraid for the safety of my daughter and my house, and, you know. I hope you understand me. My English is terrible.
Yes, we understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And is it Maria? Is that the name?
This is, yes, this is Maria Di Camillo.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we also received your email this afternoon, and we'll share that as well.
Oh, that's great. I'm sorry I make a long letter, but that's the way I talk.
That's fine. We'll read it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening. Thank you. Bye-bye.
I appreciate everyone's patience working through the meeting this, you know, online. So is there anyone else wish to speak on this project?
If there's no other resident, I'll speak.
Yep. What was your name again?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Eric Cole, and I am from Keenan Bean. I represent Amalk Inc., as the owner of real property and the operator of a Sunoco Station at 2194 South Road. That's in the town of Poughkeepsie. No, this application is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This application has been before the planning board since August, but this is the first opportunity for public comments. Stewart's application contains numerous defects, which you're not telling me to raise now as the planning board has not issued a secret determination, and I do not want to waste the board's time. I did want to indicate that there are fundamental flaws in the application. The applicant wishes you to adopt a negative declaration, which may be typical in a project of this nature, a gas station on Route 9 on a commercial lot. But the project before you is anything but typical. I wish to remind the board that if they even find the potential for one significant adverse impact on the environment, further investigation is needed, and a full environmental impact statement is warranted. I submit to you that there are many such impacts, requiring this board to make a positive declaration and to amend and demand an environmental impact statement. Before I list these potential adverse impacts, let me raise an alternative option. As this plan is fundamentally flawed, the planning board should not render a secret determination, and instead give a negative recommendation to the ZBA. The zoning board of appeals could then deny the variances sought, and Stewart should withdraw their application prior to a secret determination. This is simply, as the applicant said themselves, this is simply too large a project for too small a lot. This is evident by the five variances Stewart has identified, and by the two they failed to raise, which incidentally is a fatal flaw in their application. Stewart seeks a significant variance of 427 feet from town code 210-90E to allow them to build this gas station within 73 feet of residential property. So it is certainly not in harmony with the town's general zoning plan, as the applicant contends. And as my understanding that any precedent set that the applicant spoke of dealt with existing gas station sites, not a new site where a new gas station is to be proposed. And I also want to touch on the applicant's statement that the town board was only concerned about light and noise pollution and not safety. In the March 2012 town board meeting, on the record, it states, Councilman Egleton stated that back when he was working in Westchester, he trained as a firefighter. Part of the training was, if you had a fire under a gas tanker when it was unloading, you would evacuate everyone within a quarter-mile radius. So I would think you would want some kind of head start, 1,000 feet, maybe better than 500. And maybe the fire districts give us more insight as to what procedures they would follow for evacuation. So I don't think it's correct to make the representation that the town board was unconcerned with fire safety when they passed the 500-foot requirement. The two variances Stewart's did not identify is for an undersized lot. The project is located in the B-H district, maintaining a minimum lot area of two acres. The project lot is under one. And for the required landscape buffer of a minimum of 30 feet on all four sides of the property, which is not provided for in the site plans. All of the foregoing indicate this is the wrong-sized property for the use Stewart's intends. Forcing this project onto an undersized lot will cause significant adverse impacts on neighboring properties, aesthetics, property values, light and noise pollution...
Just to remind you, Eric, that's just three-minute warning.
Well, let me just end with, you have two options at this point. You must require a full environmental impact statement to examine the effect of ignoring the town code's requirements, or, as previously mentioned, you can reject the application outright and send a negative recommendation to the ZBA. Approving this application is going to set a dangerous precedent, and you're going to force the town to accept all applications for gas stations within 73 feet of residential property. Otherwise, you're going to be subjected to endless Article 78 litigation because of the precedent this application seeks to set. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments. In the meantime, has anyone else joined that wishes to comment on this application?
May I talk? Nat Parish.
Sure.
Hello?
Yep. What was your name again?
Nat Parish. I'm a planner, a civil engineer, and I'm a consultant to the same applicant, to the same client as Mr. Cole, who just spoke. My offices are in White Plains, New York, at 297 Overdrive. May I continue?
Sure.
To supplement some of the comments Mr. Cole made, first of all, the secret process requires, and the regulations that they have established, a whole process. The idea that a bunch of reports come in, which have come in in the last week or so, as near as I can determine, and they constitute a secret review, is just not in accordance with the regulations. There was an intent by the state legislature in enacting the thing, that there be a rigorous, careful, structured thing, which allowed for scoping document, which allowed for a draft environmental impact statement, for hearings on that draft environmental statement, then a total record of a final environmental impact statement, in which each and every comment that was made in a public hearing or written comments is answered and documented. And then finally, after all of that, a finding statement by a board, which recommends one way or another based on a record. Now, all of this establishes that there is a very careful, structured record. And in the course of the environmental statement, it looks at existing conditions. It looks also, if in the scoping document, to possible alternatives to the action where there is obviously no possible litigation. In this case, the action includes these very, very substantial variances, several minor variances, which each on her own wouldn't be harmful. But the major variances, the distance variances, the size of the lot, the buffer requirements, all of those are major variances, which are actions that the secret process has to look at. In addition to that, while there's some confusion here between variances and variance review by a ZBA and a planning board's action, as a planning board, it has an obligation to consider the original intent of the regulations adopted by the town. Planning boards shouldn't be in a position of saying, "We know better" than the town board did when enacted these regulations. I submit to you that the original enactment of the distance requirement was done with inputs from the town's development director, who explained at the time that one of the major reasons to avoid gas stations next to residential district is the 24 hours of noise and light factors that happen as cars come in and out, et cetera, near a residential district. He also mentioned other things that Mr. Cole mentioned before. So I think the basis there is, therefore, in considering the impacts of the variance the planning board has to, similarly to what the ZBA will, look at the fact that there are no reasons to grant, what is the purpose and need for granting any variance and moving ahead with this project? It doesn't create much in the way of taxes. It doesn't create any jobs.
Your three minutes have passed. If you could wrap it up?
I'll wrap it up with a memo to your board.
All right. Yep. As a reminder, everyone, comments in writing are accepted. Anytime.
Thank you.
There was somebody who had their hand raised while the previous gentleman was speaking, though it doesn't seem to be raised any longer.
Hello?
Yeah? Yes?
Yeah, I raised my hand, and then I put it down, but then I now have another few questions, if that's okay?
Yes, please. And please tell your name and where you live, too.
My name is Ronnie Zalinski. I live at 26 South Gate Drive. I bought the property in June of last year. I guess my concern is, all this information is new. If it hadn't been Fort Neber telling us that this was happening, we wouldn't know that this meeting was even occurring tonight. And my concern is that we're not getting any information, I mean, either sent to the residents, as far as I'm concerned, or mailed, emailed, to know what's going on right down the road from us. I just moved in. I have a seven-year-old son who's in school. The fact that, you know, you're now talking about putting gas lines 73 feet away from other residents, you know, who could be, you know, children who play with my son, is very concerning to me, and that this information wasn't disseminated to us in some kind of written form or visual form, so that we could try to understand it and process it and be a part of the process. So I guess my question is, you know, things happen, and we're allowed to voice our opinion right now, but I don't believe I have all the information that I may need in order to do that.
As I said, you can continue to look at the material from the town, and it's on the website, and also send in written comments.
And then who votes on this? I mean, I am a resident that is, you know, right down the road. But I don't have a voice in this besides voicing my concerns. I'm not voting on this in any way. Is that correct?
No, you do not. There's several boards that are involved in voting, both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals will have voting in this application.
And if you're looking for, on our website, and you're having any trouble finding the information about this application, please contact Carol Barone. She's the planning board secretary in the planning department, and she will be able to...
Name for Paige is R.E.
On the planning, yeah, if you go to the planning department page on the website, you'll get her phone number. Okay?
And email. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And there's someone else with their hand up. Harold's iPhone.
Yeah, this is Harold Dean. I live on 21 Bridge Waterway, which is off of Camelot. And I'm probably...
We're not hearing you very well, Harold. Could you...
Your voice isn't coming through. We can see you now, but...
All right. Can you hear me now?
We see you, but we don't hear you too well.
Very faintly.
Yeah?
Okay. I live on 21 Bridge Waterway.
There we go.
Probably use a traffic light by the current car wash, probably daily. And usually, when we come to that light, it's about a five-minute wait for that light to turn. Has that been factored into the traffic flow through that intersection, or backing up through Stewart's?
And we'll have our traffic consultant, you know, look at if the timing of the light needs to be changed or anything like that.
Well, the question is, you know, when you're talking about a buffer of three cars, right now, you've got traffic coming in through the deli and the old Sunny Ridge. I've been a resident for about 60 years in Dutchess County, and I was here when it was Sunny Ridge, you know, the fruit market. I just think it's a lot of extra traffic in that area, kind of congested in that intersection.
Okay. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else that wishes to speak?
Again, you can do star nine if you want to raise your hand, star six to mute and unmute if you're on the phone. I'm not seeing anybody else.
All right. As a reminder, we'll be adjourned the hearing, and so you'll have other opportunities to comment on this application. So at this point, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June 18, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Seven to zero. At this point, we'll go around the board for additional comments on the application. We'll start with Peter. Nope, Peter, we're not hearing you. Are you there?
Are you muted? Or I'm trying to find him so I can...
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great.
Terrific. Thank you, Kristen, for following up, getting the information about the municipal water system there. I would receive some emails expressing some concern about contamination of wells, and hopefully, your follow-up will address that concern. At some point, I think that the applicant will have to meet with Mark Pfeifer, the town highway superintendent. I'm pretty sure the town does have a standard for an inclination angle on driveways. The applicant expressed concern about replacing their proposed access a little further to the west. I think they'll have to sit down with Mark and come up with some kind of understanding. That pretty much, that's pretty much all I have for now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Yeah, I mean, the further west you go, the more the... Yeah, I mean, the further west you go, the more the topography gets in the way, so it'd be a good idea for the applicant to discuss that with Mark. Ben, do you have anything? I know you have some gas tank experience.
I have to speak on?
Oh, Ben.
About meeting.
Still not hearing you, Ben. Let me go to, let me go back to you, go to Nicole first.
Good evening. This is Nicole Jamati. Really quick, Mr. Fowler, I know that we probably talked about this in previous planning departments, but Mr. Parrish, I brought it up before, and to the top of my head, I couldn't remember. Again, what were the operations of ours you were thinking for this particular Stewarts?
I'd have to look at the application, but generally we're five to midnight, but I'm not exactly sure what we applied for here.
Does anyone else know the, you haven't seen that, okay. Yeah, I wanted to check ours as well. Anything else, Nicole? That's it. Let's move on to Rocco.
Yes, hi, this is Rocco Romeo speaking. I just had one question. If you take a look at the site plan, there's either our planner or the Stewart's rep identify areas for snow storage, because you guys have, you have a lot of landscape, and the back part of that lot, I think, is very hilly. So all the parking areas, when it snows, there really isn't any place to put the snow, as far as I can see.
Hey, Rocco, they identified snow storage at the northern end of the parcel, just off Route 9 there, that's labeled "snow storage area."
Those oval circles are the snow.
Right, yeah, I see that, but that seems awfully small for all that area. Am I missing something?
There's some additional circles around the edges of the site plan.
Yeah, I see four circles.
That's correct.
Okay, and we think, our planners think that that's fine? If that's the case, then that's fine, but I'd like to hear from our side that there's enough there.
We can take a closer look at that.
Yeah, I mean, they have reduced the, they're showing a little bit reduced pavement area versus what's there now, but we'll...
To supplement your question, I guess I would also ask, Chad, is it something that you would look into as a business operationally? Do you have snow removed and shipped off-site in order to make the site function as needed? Is that something that Stewarts does?
Yes, we do that in many stores. You know, you only have so much storage anywhere, and we do haul away as needed.
All right. Yep, sometimes we get some whopper snowstorms.
That's true.
All right. Anything else, Rocco?
No, that's it for now. Thank you.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, hi, this is Bob Nasser. Looking at the chart that you have, the truck routing plan, it appears that southbound traffic coming in can enter without having to leave the most western lane on Route 9. Looks like there's an angle they can come in, but trucks coming north on 9, turning onto South Gate, showing that they have to move into the exit lane from South Gate in order to make a right turn. And if there's, cars queued up there, that's going to be, seems to me it's going to be impossible to make that turn until those cars leave, which ties up perhaps South Gate and also could tie up the traffic on Route 9. Have you considered the impact of that, or am I not reading this chart correctly?
So as the truck pulls out into South Gate, it does pull out over the two lanes, because there's two lanes on exit South Gate.
Yeah, I was talking about northbound on 9, turning into South Gate to get into the Stewarts facility.
We, I'm not showing that 9 pulling in from the north on 9. We can add that if you'd like to see.
Well, I'm just curious, how would they, that looks like they have to make a right turn.
They, yes, they would have to come in and take a right.
Yeah, they can't go in at an angle, and not likely to be able to make that right turn, you know, from what I'm looking at, by staying in the right lane. So they would have to swing out the same way you're showing them coming out of the site.
We can definitely take another look at that and add another detail to the plan.
I'm just concerned that, you know, creating a bottleneck near a truck waiting to turn in there, and cars coming out of South Gate, and they're not going to be able to do that until those clear, and then they still have to, they have to wait till the exit lane is free before they can make that turn. So if you can look at that and let me know if I'm mistaken here or what the real story is. That's all I've got.
Yeah, and this is Kristen. Chad, I have a quick question, too, just to, again, supplement what Bob's getting at, and also I think what Nicole was trying to touch on before about operational hours, and this has been brought up previously, but do you tend to monitor, or is, like, how do you stagger delivery? Is it something that happens at 5:00 in the morning or at midnight? I mean, you're not going to have the truck going in and out of there at 3:00 in the afternoon, right? I mean, I don't, is that something that you talk about or note when you submit an application like this?
I would have to look at this particular, like, I would have to look at neighboring stores to see what I'm going to get delivered with today, to today. Generally, we get deliveries every three days by one truck, and that truck hauls frozen, dry, and refrigerated. We do deliver during the day. It's all hours, so, but I'm not sure, this district and this route, what it is today. It does change over time as we add stores and change routes, et cetera, but I can definitely look and see what the neighboring, like, what route this would be today, and what time it would get delivered if it was today, if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, we...
Yeah, I think the additional information would be helpful.
I mean, that was one of my questions also, when we get to it, to ask, you know, what are your hours of operation totally in deliveries?
I will add to that, on the gas side, that goes by volume. That is not a scheduled delivery. It doesn't go by routine schedule, so it goes by how much gas we sell. So that could be anytime, depending on how much gas gets sold out of the tanks.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Joan?
Hi there, this is Joan Quinn. I also was wanting to know about the hours of operation, and also, it looks like a lot of vegetation or trees were added in response to the request screening, so it looks like it's been put in some of the snow removal locations, so I just wanted to point that out when you reexamine the adequacy of the snow removal, if the vegetation is going to impact that at all. That's all.
Okay, yep. Yeah, we got to take a look at vegetation in general for screening. All right, let me see, Ben, did you ever get back on to make comments?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can, great.
Okay. I was going to say, first of all, it's good that they moved the tanks farther away from residents, and I keep hearing concerns about safety, so I'd like the applicant to talk about a little bit about monitoring the tanks. I know Stewarts has 336 stores, they said, so they're good at putting in gas tanks. And do they use a wet system? I know, I'm pretty sure they do for monitoring the tanks in the interstitial space, as well as the turbine enclosures, which are closer to grade. And are the dispensers dispensers or pumps? What, the pump in the tank and the dispenser at grade level and fire suppression?
All good questions. Can applicant respond to those comments?
Sure. So our installation goes well beyond what's required by New York State. They're double-wall fiberglass tanks with an interstitial monitoring. Interstitial is required by the state. It is a wet interstitial, which means it's filled with a brine solution, and it's monitored by a probe. That's the space, the interstitial space of the tanks. On top of the tanks, we have turbine sumps, which is not a requirement, but we want everything to be contained in the event of any leaks at all, so we do surround the turbine with a sump. We have double-wall piping to the islands. We put that double-wall piping in a sleeve, so in essence, it's a triple wall. That, again, goes above and beyond. The dispensers are not pumps, they are dispensers at the island, so the pump is inside the gas tank in the ground and pushes gas.
It's not up near the surface.
Not up by the surface. It's on top of the tank. The actual pump is inside the tank, at the bottom of the tank. Everything is monitored electronically. That is a requirement. Right now, you can, by New York standards, you can manually dip your tanks every day in your interstitial. We do it electronically. It's monitored 24 hours. It's tied to our main office, so if anything occurs, whether the store's open or closed, it calls out, so we're aware. We have leak detectors on the lines. That is a requirement. We use electronic leak detectors versus mechanical. Again, so it's tied in electronically, and we'll alert if there's any problems. And as far as fire suppression, fire suppression is no longer required. That code has changed two years ago, so no more fire suppression. Instead, we have push-to-stop buttons per code within 75 feet of the dispensers, if they're at the front door and at the island. That is the new code to shut down the pumps with a push-to-stop button.
Okay, I just wanted some of the people listening to feel a little more comfortable about the safety of this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ben. And my comments, I think we addressed most of it. Just confirm, Kristen mentioned the wells. There are no wells. There were never any wells in the area, other than the central well that was kept way back in 1971, so it's all on community water, so we should not have any drinking water contamination, even if something gets by all that. And from a light spillage point of view, you mentioned you were willing to comply with lowering that down, so I appreciate that. We want to make, even if it's hit zero at the property line, sometimes it looks very bright looking at it. The trees, we should look further at the tree screening to make sure it's not covering the snow storage, and make sure it's sufficient to block the view of the pumps and the bright And it looks like you've moved the tanks as far north as you can get them. Last comment I have is, if this goes forward, to see if you're willing to work with the fire and police, perhaps to use the existing building for some training before demolition. Anyone else have anything further on the board?
Carl, this is Rocco. I've got one other question. I'm taking a look at the current chart that's up, and I'm wondering if there's enough room there for a garbage truck to turn around and to back up to where the garbage area is? Because I know they would put, it depends which way they come in, either way it looks like that they would have to do a stop and then back up. I haven't seen any of that on any of the plans. It just dawned on me, I was curious. Chad, can somebody answer, or is that something you need to look into?
We can add that truck routing on the plan when we add the South Gate Drive coming from the north at 9, if you'd like. From what I'm seeing here, I think the truck can make it either way. They will have to back up, obviously, after they dump the garbage to on top of the gas tanks and then pull out. But I think they can make the swing, from what I'm seeing here, from either direction of coming in, but we can verify that and put that on the plan.
Yeah, it'd be good to have that documented.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rocco. Guess we're ready for a motion, Nicole Knapp?
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, 1 through 10.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. I'll do a call to question by roll call. Don't hear, Peter, are you muted? Let me move on to Ben.
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And Peter, if you're back? I'm hearing, but I'll say aye, so motion passes, six to zero. All right. All right, thanks for your presentation tonight, and address those comments moving forward, and we'll see you back at the June meeting.
Chad, if you could unshare your screen, too, would be helpful.
Next up, Coralwood Ventures Offices, secret review, lot line revision review, and amended site plan review for the development of a maintenance yard with a 4,400-square-foot office building. Welcome back, guys. Who's here for that tonight?
Good evening. Ken Kizmento from LRC.
Hey, Ken.
Mike, I'm going to share my screen, if that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine, Ken, thank you.
Everyone can see it, hopefully?
Yes, we do.
So we were here before the March meeting got, unfortunately, canceled, and we were moving to go forward with a new office building for Coralwood Ventures on this proposed lot. It's a 4,400-square-foot office building, primary doors, it really is a rear entry with two garage doors for storage within the building. It's 0.96 acres of total disturbance. It does, the project does involve a lot line alteration, where we're swapping lands between two lots. The current parcel is, parcels are Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 1 is, we explored developable options on this, met with the board and met with the DUC, but based on the wetlands and the location of the buffer zone, really wasn't just feasible to do the work. The owners of Lot 2 were willing to swap essentially the land up above, which was on Lot 2's land, the same amount to Lot 1 with a cross-axis easement. So we are now proposing Lot 1 up above, Lot 2 remains as the portion of the bottom. We worked with Lizette's comments over the last weekend, we got some of the items that she wanted, some of the storage units that were located on the property on the plans, one of which, as an existing salt said, identified here by the red arrow, is within the setback at 16.8 feet from the setback. We have applied to the ZBA and hope to be on the ZBA's agenda for May. This is a 4,400-square-foot building. One of the concerns was proximity to the wetlands with regard to blinding turtles. We have worked with the DUC, we've added some notes here. Those notes are likely not reflective in the plans that you have as they were worked out after the date of the submission a month ago to the planning board. So these notes are new. They were submitted to staff and to Carol Knapp after, as soon as we received comments from the DUC and that update. As you can see here, one of the other items that was brought out from Carol was asked to, in this area off to the left, was to reclaim the soils here as it's highly compacted. And that, as Andy Lern pointed out correctly... And that, as Andy Lern pointed out correctly, in our original disturbance area was not accurately shown on there. So we revised it to include that area and also amended it to remove some of the areas that we are not planning on going in, which were included before, such as keeping the trees along the entry and the actual entry road. So we tweaked it again, and we were down to under an acre. We did note Nandi's most recent comments, that he's asked us to stake those out during construction, which we will. Proposed utility, there is a requirement to work with the town board to get a sewer tenancy agreement. We have met with the town board initially and the supervisor, and the town board indicated that they are agreeable to entering into a sewer tenancy agreement for this applicant once the approval is granted. So once we get to that stage, hopefully with staff and some assistance with the town board, we can move through the process of getting that done. With that, I will hold any discussions on the actual elevations, if you want, or would you like me to do them now?
Let's all hold off on architecture.
I'm sorry, Carl, I didn't hear.
Hold off on the architecture, Ken, until a little bit later.
Sure.
See how this goes. Thanks, Ken, for the overview.
Thank you.
Kristen?
Okay, so thank you, Ken, for the overview. We do have Carol Knapp, our environmental consultant for the town, present, who may want to speak a little bit about the conversation she had in review in going through the Blandings turtle review and submitting to DEC. But I know that Carol has reviewed those materials that Ken submitted in addition to the letter received by DEC, and so she felt comfortable, you know, as long as those precautions were put in place, she would be amenable to moving forward with the project as proposed. But yes, this project's on for a public hearing. It had been previously opened, but again, due to the COVID-19 situation, we had to re-notice the hearing, and here we are again, opening the public hearing for a secret review, lot line revision review, and amended site plan review. I know that Ken also prepared architectural renderings for your review this evening for the proposed building as well, so I did have some outstanding comments. I do think that some of them could be worked out at a staff level with the applicant, so the board may want to discuss those. And I did prepare a recommendation to go either way, to open and close the public hearing based on input this evening, adopt a secret resolution, and adopt a resolution to grant conditional lot line revision and amended site plan revision review. And then the board would conduct architectural review. If the board would like to keep the planning or the public hearing open, there is a resolution prepared for that as well. I guess the only other thing, again, and Ken touched on it, is that the applicant did appear before the town board just to have a preliminary discussion about the sewer tenancy agreement. So that would have to be something that's worked out as part of a conditional approval. And also, there are deadlines and timelines in place for the lot line revision approval, so we just have to be mindful of those timeframes.
All right, thanks, Kristen. You go to Carol first, see if she has any additional comments. I think your letter cites your most satisfied.
I have no additional comments. Originally, we were just putting on hold and waiting for response from the DEC. DEC has responded that there is taken the precautions that have been proposed. There should not be a take of the endangered species. So we're satisfied with that. Additionally, my other concern was the the significant area to, I think it's the south, that was just yard that nothing was going to happen to. So that has also been addressed with decompaction and planting seeding. That will significantly alleviate the erosion potential on the site. And even if that did go over the acre, which we're close and for all practical purposes, sometimes, you know, we get concerned when it's 0.96, 0.97, if it's really an acre. But the, it will result in an improvement, and it was highly necessary. So I'm satisfied with everything at this point in time.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carol. And from an engineering standpoint and stormwater, Don, you have some comments?
I think, as Ken mentioned, we're pretty well off with the not to need a SWIP. We concur with his comments about trying to work the tenancy agreement out. There's some other minor notes and stuff that we've requested, but all in all, we're in pretty good shape.
All right, great. Thanks. Right, this is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone in the audience or on the line who wishes to speak on this project tonight? A reminder that if you're on the phone, you may use the star six to mute and unmute, and star nine to raise your hand. Just give it a few seconds to let people. Not seeing anything. All right. This has been open before, and I don't think we've gotten any comments. So seeing none, I move that the planning board close the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the hearing. I'll do a call to question by roll call vote for this. Peter? Not hearing.
Aye.
Oh, okay, great. Ben? Not hearing you, Ben. Go to Nicole?
Aye.
Okay, got you. Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself. Aye. Public hearing is closed. Go around the board for additional comments. We start with Jones.
Hey there. Yeah, I don't have any comments, really. Recall this application from a prior appearance, other than the notations in today's comments that I think any action would be conditioned on. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joan. Bob?
No, I don't have any comments. I was curious on how they were going to address the Blanding turtle situation. It sounds like they've got that under control, so.
Yep, Carol looked at that with them. Okay, Rocco?
Nothing else at this time. Thank you.
Nicole?
Yeah, Ken, really quick, that privacy fence, you guys still putting that up?
Yes, we are.
Can you just show me where that would be put up? I did see a note on the color, that it'd be like an OPEC, like white, whetish type of tone.
Yes.
But I think there was a little confusion as to exactly where you would be putting it up.
Sure.
Show us, that'd be great.
Yep. So I'm just going to grab a pen here. Bear with me one second. It is not, it was originally proposed up here, a short section of it, to the berm. But when you looked at the grading and when we looked at comments, it really didn't make any sense because there's two landscape burns around on that side. So that section of fence was removed. The fence is going to remain here. So it'll go from the building out to the road itself, the entrance drive.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, got it. Thanks for raising the bar on the graphics, too, Ken. That was nice. That was good. Getting better. Okay, Ben, do you have anything?
No, nothing.
And Peter?
No.
All right. And the fence was my question as well. I did see one other question. Kristen brought up a concern along the building for bollards or wheel stops or something. You willing to put something in like that?
So I'll go back to my screen, if you don't mind?
Yep. What kind of protection?
The, one of the questions which was here was the space that is right up by the end of the door, this space here, was originally a handicap space. We didn't need the space, so we removed it. With that removal, it created a parking space, which created an odd potential for a vehicle that parks here to drive into the door. So we knew we were overparked by a space or two, so we decided actually to make this all striped now
Okay.
going forward. So this will be a no-parking area entirely, so there'll be no reason to have a curb stop in front of the door that, we didn't really want something there because of the tripping hazard, potentially coming in and out of the building and that type thing. And when we didn't need the space, we thought it would be more appropriate to leave that open as just such.
Okay, that resolves the issue, then. Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome.
All right, I think we're ready for Seeker.
I move that the planning board hereby determine that the Corewood Ventures lot line revision and amended site plan would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in Seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated April 30, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded for Seeker. Call to question. All those in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Aye for myself. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval and amended site plan approval for Corewood Ventures 240 and 300 Van Wagner Road, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by planning department as to adequacy and completeness, inclusive of but not limited to the following, one through nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, Ken, you can pop up the architectural review, if you're prepared.
Yep.
One second here.
So the building will have the same color scheme all the way around. It's a standing metal roof with a standing seam metal roof with a metal side and a ledge stone gray manner, lower trim piece. So the color is ash gray, which is, and it's a PBR panel, and this is the profile of the panel here. That'll be on the sides of the building, on all four sides, and this is the Eurostone ledge stone. It's a grayish palette to complement the darker roof and lighter side. The roof would be a standing seam metal roof, charcoal gray. Again, this is the pattern look at the bottom, but that would be on the roof on all sides around as well.
All right, thank you. Does anyone on the board have any comments on the architecture?
Looks good. Ms. Rocco?
All right.
It's pretty.
Yep, it's good to see you. The hip roof. All right, I move that we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve architecture. Call to question. All those in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Good to go, Ken.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night, and appreciate you, everyone, making the time to make this happen during these times, and be safe.
Okay, we're working.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Next up is Eastdale Village, formerly known as McDonald Heights Town Center, public hearing for the ninth amended site plan review.
Hi, and good evening to all of you.
Hey, Jeff?
Thank you again for hosting these meetings from a distance. Again, it makes a big difference. So just kind of as a quick overview, we have in front of you this ninth amendment to the site plan. And for the first time in this project, we're really digging into the east side of 44 and starting to suggest changes on that side. And this submission is really an opportunity to apply some of the lessons that we learned on the west side to bring them to the east side to make the project better, frankly. I think lesson number one, and hopefully you all appreciate this one, is that we wanted to figure out the utilities with enough flexibility now, change them this time, so that we don't have to keep coming back to you when we make changes on the water and sewer and drainage. We can get it done, get it done right. And that'll just, it'll make it easier in the future, as we know. We know we're going to get changes on the commercial users as we move forward, but we're trying again to resolve some of those flexibility issues now, and you'll see that in the plans. Lesson number two is that underground stormwater facilities are really expensive. And so we've changed some of the design here. We've eliminated, I think, seven different underground storage stormwater facilities and moved them to a service stormwater facility. And one of the things that, again, it saves the project money. It also, because of the way they're designed, they're better in one regard, we, in particular, and that's we get better and more groundwater recharge of the stormwater into the system. Again, one of the goals from the stormwater program overall is to recharge the stormwater into the groundwater rather than let it run off. And we're getting more of that with these surface facilities rather than subsurface facilities. I think the third lesson that we learned, and I said it just a second ago, the commercial space is going to morph with the users as they come online, and that's not news. But one of the ways that we're trying to control that is not come to you with a bunch of little changes, as we may have suggestions from tenants here and there, but try to roll those into, into, you know, a ball of changes all at once, again, to make this process move smoother. So we haven't really touched some of the footprints for the commercial uses on the east side, even though we know we're going to want to. We'll do that as things get to the end of the 100% phase with us and our users in the architecture. And I guess the last lesson we've learned and started to see at early is that no garages. Again, the garages have come off the site plan. We're not going to have any garages on the site, and that, instead of replacing those with surface parking. Parking has just one of those things that's become very precious on the site, and so we've looked to increase the total parking count. So let me share my screen for a second and walk through some of these changes.
Yep.
The overall, and this is the east side, the overall plan, and I know we've spent a lot of time on the west side, but just to orient you, you know, 44 across the top of the buildings, Building 12, Building 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. I tried to keep those in numerical order. And following the commercial buildings, which are letters instead of numbers for the residential buildings, H, I, J, K, and L, so you'll hear me now and later kind of refer to these. So that's the convention that we've used. Residential buildings get a number. Commercial and mixed-use buildings get a letter on the site. So the overall, the big change with the utilities, again, as we talked about, is that we've implemented surface stormwater on the, on what was the adjacent industrial retro parcel, and been able to direct all the, well, really the stormwater all from the west side into these two basins here for treatment and ultimate discharge, either as infiltration of the groundwater or discharge into the existing stormwater system on the parcel on the north side of the on the, the north side of the connector road down to Victory Lane. So, that's really eliminated, again, the seven, uh, subsurface, um, treatment systems that were on site. And eliminating those, uh, those subsurface treatment systems kind of opens some further opportunities on the site. We had subsurface in this, um, in this area here, which is now, um, uh, more of a, uh, more of a green area. Uh, and here was, uh, was subsurface, and so we've been able to, uh, again, take the subsurface out of, uh, out of that area and along the, uh, along the borders and the parking areas here. So, we've, we've, we've gained more flexibility on the site without having, uh, kind of the, the very structured subsurface, um, uh, stormwater facilities throughout the, uh, throughout the, the parking area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sewer has been moved to run, um, really behind, um, the, uh, commercial buildings instead of in front. And again, that, uh, what that gives us the flexibility on is as, as things change, uh, we've got the sewer lines running, uh, running back. Um, we've flipped to the, uh, to the full utility plan. Right, so these are the easements that you're seeing broadly, but for the sewer lines back here is, as some changes may happen in these, uh, these commercial buildings, we've got the sewer separated far enough so we won't have any, uh, any, uh, impact, won't have to redo the easements, won't have to redo the sewer lines. Um, and it all continues to work. Sewer will continue to flow down to a pump station, uh, down here in, in this corner, and is pumped back up to the, uh, pump station that's, uh, just on the, the west side of,
Yep.
Uh, of our, uh, of our site on the Lutheran Center side. So, the, kind of the ultimate flow of the sewer is the same, but we just kind of reoriented some of the, uh, some of the internal lines. And again, we, with the, with the reworking of the drainage lines, there was some, uh, repositioning of their subsurface drainers throughout the site. So, this, again, those utility changes are kind of the, the big change that, uh, that this site, that this plan, uh, proposes. Um, the second issue, uh, was the, um, relocation of the Ortega House. And, um, show you this, um, uh, the Ortega lot is up, uh, is up here, and it's where the Ortega House was. And it moved, I'm sorry, it was, uh, this is the Ortega lot here. Um, we moved the Ortega House from this lot to this corner here, um, just to the, uh, to the west of, of building 12. And we're gonna just go to a slightly different view here. In the, uh, in the, in the cover letter that we were, that we've, um, sent to you, kind of showed the site plan of this area before we put the, uh, put the Ortega House in it. You can see how, again, 44 and the, uh, the, the exit lane from the internal parkside drive onto 44. And there was a lawn area here. Um, and so, we, we thought it appropriate to put the, uh, the Ortega House in that corner. I kept it in line with the adjacent house on 44, kept the separation of the property line the same as, uh, for the, for the townhouse buildings. And it resulted in a shift of building 12 to the east a little bit, but other than that, there was, uh, no significant change under the site. Got some parking for, uh, for that house. Uh, we presented this plan to the state, to all of the parks recreation and historic preservation. And, um, uh, it was approved right away, which I was, uh, which we, we kind of didn't expect, but, uh, it happened right away. And so, we've, we've got that on this plan for your, uh, for your review and, uh, and approval. Um, the, uh, uh, third thing, as I had alluded to, is that there were garages behind building 17, and, uh, there were a total of 11 garages there. And we, uh, proposing to, uh, remove those, um, and instead have, uh, additional parking for our residences in the, in the back. And, uh, we picked up some, um, like, we've, uh, 11 more parking spaces, uh, back here as a result of, uh, of eliminating the garages. And we think that's, uh, that's an important, uh, important addition to this, uh, to this, this, uh, this site. Part of our parking issue isn't always what's the total parking. It's where is the parking and how does it relate to the doors of the individual users? And so, this parking here on the backside of building 17, uh, related to this entry in building 17. It was, uh, it was important to make that, uh, to make that work better, uh, from a residential, uh, residential perspective.
All right.
And then, the last thing that, uh, that we had talked about in our, um, in our submission, were some changes to buildings A1 through A6. Um, A1 is the building on the corner of Eastdale Avenue North, so I'm back on the other side of the, uh, of 44. Eastdale Avenue North and, and 44, and it's the Rossi's Deli. This is the, uh, plan as originally approved, and, um, this is the plan as proposed. Now, this one-story structure got a little longer, um, and, um, well, it doesn't really show in the site plan. Uh, programmatically, the, there's a, been a basement added underneath, uh, not just the two-story portion, but the basement was added underneath the one-story portion as well. There's a prep area down there, and so there's a, of a mechanism for getting, uh, food prepped out to this one-story, uh, structure. Um, they load that into, into vans for, uh, for off-site, uh, uh, food deliveries out of this, uh, out of this, this loading area. So, those, uh, and, and building A3, 4, 5, and 6, again, some minor tweaks, a couple of feet here and there, um, as we were working on the architecture, these buildings just got, uh, a little larger. And those, those changes in total programmatic square footage for the commercial users were, uh, addressed by adjusting the commercial uses programmatically on the east side of the, uh, of, uh, of the highway. Yeah, we didn't change the footprints, uh, but have just changed the, uh, changed the numbers in the spreadsheet until we get final architecture, and then we can reconcile the actual footprint with the actual, uh, the actual usage. Um, but, uh, but they all seem to work within the space that, uh, that we've, uh, that we've composed. So, again, that's, uh, that's the overview that I have, and I know we have a public hearing here, so I'm, I'm available for questions.
Yep, thanks, Jeff. You go to Eric first?
Sure. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, um, staff, uh, prepared a recommendation, um, with, for a, uh, to confirm the previous seeker findings, um, from, and also to grant a commission, conditional amended site plan approval. Um, and then, if the applicant is prepared, either now or at a future date to conduct architectural review, if the board proceeds that way. Um, there are quite a few comments, um, in the letter that we provided to you. Um, I guess, the board could go either way on this. Staff feels like it, it could move ahead if the board is comfortable with, uh, leaving some of these comments for staff review, uh, or if it prefers to come back to you for review, then that, that's okay too. That's an option. However, in terms of seeker, the, uh, the changes proposed wouldn't change the development program at all, so there's no increase in, in density. Uh, the additional land use beyond the site is stormwater, which is similar to the original stormwater basin proposed offsite. It's not in addition to the project, uh, nor does the added use of a stormwater offsite change the development program, as previously mentioned. Uh, the, as Jeff mentioned, the relocation of the historic house, um, has already been endorsed by state historic preservation, uh, so that, that seeker issue is covered. And there is, let's see. I guess the, the other concern, the things the board might want to talk about is the scope of other revisions. Um, we had a little difficulty reviewing all the changes on the plan because they weren't, they weren't called out or marked up, so we had to go look for them. Um, subsequent to our review, I found out, for example, that the land bank parking is, I, I didn't get a chance to look at that. Somebody called out that, that some of the land bank parking is going away. So, I would actually add one more comment to our, uh, to the staff review that the land bank part can be addressed in any response letter. Um, I don't think it's a great big deal either way, but it should just be addressed for the record.
Okay.
That said, the, the board may want to discuss the extent of changes. I know the engineer had a couple of, uh, concerns about floodplain, um, and changes to the SWIP, so they may want to weigh in on that. It goes to our comments.
Thanks, Eric. Yes, who else heading to next? Because there's significant changes in stormwater practices here, so Don, can you weigh in? Especially, uh, mentioning of floodplain issues, or?
Yeah, there definitely are some changes. Um, we've asked them to provide justification in accordance with the flood, uh, flood damage prevention code of the town for placing, uh, a couple of these basins either partially within or wholly within the floodplain. Um, we, we obviously are asking for changes to the SWIP. Um, we got some easement issues, clarifications that, that we want to see as well. Um, you know, uh, like Eric said, I think there, we have a lot of comments. Uh, I don't know that any of them are showstoppers.
Okay. All right, thanks, Don.
Eric, uh, I'm sorry, just to make, just one thing. I, I, uh, you said the land bank parking went away. If it did, that was unintentional, a graphic area, error, and, you know, that, that'll, and, and it should be a comment, I agree, but just so you and the board knows, there was no intent to take that, uh, take that away.
I think Eric had said that, that some of that parking might have been where the, uh, Ortega House is moving to.
Yeah.
So, that may be what happened there.
The issue was that the space between the, um, between the two buildings of, the two townhouse buildings was for land bank parking.
Ah.
And I'm not sure if that, the space between there changed at all with moving Ortega House when you have to move the one building further east, I believe? So, um, the question was just to document that how much land bank parking there was before and how much there was after, so the board could evaluate or staff could evaluate.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. And, uh, and they have added more spaces by taking that garage away as well over on the, uh, to the west there. All right?
And, and if I could just say one other, uh, one other item, and that was we, we, we talked, and, and in Eric's comments, there was a request to, um, change, and again, another kind of a lesson learned, change the, um, uh, textured pavement to, uh, just crosswalks. And I didn't, we didn't provide graphically how that would look, but I, um, we asked the, uh, I asked the engineer to, to kind of draw that up, and there are, there were five locations where we had, uh, textured pavement. This is in front of building one, the big elbow-shaped, um, uh, three-story building on the east side. There was textured pavement in this area, and instead, we're proposing, again, uh, the crosswalks and the loading zone uh, to keep that, uh, a pedestrian-friendly zone, uh, instead of the, uh, the colored and textured pavement. Um, Eastdale Avenue North, and this was at the, kind of the, the corner of Founder's Way, were buildings A, B, um, the, the green, and buildings, the cottages at D, and building E. So, that was all one corner of, uh, textured pavement. Instead, we've got, uh, wider crosswalks and pedestrian signage, uh, throughout the, throughout the area, uh, here. We've also added, um, which wasn't on the, on the site plan, but as a, as an additional protection, we have 15 mile per hour speed limits throughout the site. An area in front of the medical office building, again, um, was textured. We've got, uh, broad crosswalks and signage. And then on the, um, uh, on the, uh, east side, kind of the same configuration where the, the multi-use buildings and the residential buildings are, meeting at Eastdale Avenue South and Karen Way. I replaced the, uh, textured pavement with, uh, the crosswalks. And then that, where the, kind of the four corners of the, of the multi-use buildings, uh, same, same, uh, condition. So, again, that's the, the graphically how this would, uh, this is proposed to work on both sides, uh, to provide that, the necessary traffic calming, uh, in the site.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. I was gonna ask about that.
Jeff, is that just an aesthetic change, or is it also functional?
Um, so it is certainly a, an aesthetic change. Is it, is it, i- it, they function differently, I guess, is, uh, is the answer, I would say. So, in, instead of, uh, the, all of the pavement being, uh, a different, a different color, we have, again, the, the broad crosswalks and the signage to provide the traffic calming, uh, necessary there. One of the, one of the concerns with, uh, with all of the pavement, uh, being, being colored is that it all looks like, it all looks like sa- it's safer for pedestrians to come into it. And it, at, uh, at times, that may be okay, and, and in fact, we would support that, but at times, it's, it's not the right thing to have, uh, with the traffic through there. So, we thought it better to have air on safety there, have the crosswalks, and then, um, uh, when, when it's, you know, again, if there's an event on the, uh, on the site that people can walk through the intersection, that's great, they can walk through the intersection. But it was just kind of a, as we looked at it more, started to more in those particular intersections, I thought this, this just made more sense, um, uh, for the, for the thoroughfare, uh, throughout.
Yep, so the, uh, the pedestrian area is more defined then, with the crosswalk?
Yes.
All right. This is a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone on the, uh, call tonight that wishes to speak on this project? I'll remind those that are on the phone that they can use star six to mute and unmute, and star nine to raise their hand. We'll give it a minute to look for anybody looking to speak. I do not see anybody. All right, seeing none, I, I move we close the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero, close the public hearing. Uh, let's go around the board for additional comments tonight. Ben, start with you.
Not now, nothing.
Peter?
Uh, the question for, uh, Don Beer?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Don, I just want to know, you know, with the drainage, uh, discharging, the stormwater discharge in a 100-year floodplain, if you decide to go ahead with this tonight, do you feel comfortable that you'll be able to work that out? So, that's reasonable?
Uh, you, yes, I think we will. We have other, uh, projects that we have, uh, stormwater basins in the 100-year floodplain. So, I expect that this, we'll be able to work this out as well.
All right, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Peter. Nicole?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, um, and this, I think this was something that a couple of us were wondering about, is with the increase of pavement, what about the green space?
So, the, um, the site continues to exceed, um, all of the, the, the zoning and site plan standard metrics for, uh, for, for green space. Um, and that's tabulated on, uh, the table on, uh, on sheet one, and I, I, I could pull it up if you want to, but yeah, I'm sure you could.
Is there a particular area concerned with, Nicole?
But the, uh, we, we think we've, um, again, got more flexibility. Okay, it's on sheet, it's on the second sheet. We think we've got more flexibility with, uh, where those green spaces ultimately end up, um, with, uh, by change in our stormwater regime. Um, so you can see total lo- usable open space required, about 10.7 acres. Um, the usable open space number, 9.62, plus the required open space, and these are additive. They're not, uh, they're not separate numbers. They have a total of, you know, over 30 acres of open space, uh, that's been provided, uh, on the, uh, on the site. So, that's only half the equation, because the other half is where are those in relation to, uh, to the individual residents of the site? to the individual residents of the site and the users? And so again, we think that the way the site plan lays out, we've got very nice areas on both the east and the west side. Because we now have the green space in the across here, where the playground is, and green space down here that was subsurface storage. We've got, again, little bits of green throughout, amenities throughout the site that we think work well. And this side, of course, backs up onto all of the green space behind Building 16, which is then adjacent to the 19.4 acres that the town took as recreation land. So we've really got a nice, big green space back behind these buildings preused by the residents. That's one of the reasons why the residential is in the back, among other things, it puts them close to the park. We think it works well.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Anything further, Nicole?
No, thanks, Jeff.
All right, Rocco?
Nothing new at this time, thank you.
Bob?
No, I have just a comment. You know, I think the transformation of this property since the groundbreaking to today has been amazing. It's done it in a pretty quick time. It's, you know, it's very surprising, at least to me, you know, how quickly it's developed. But I was curious, are you seeing any lack of interest because of the COVID-19 situation kind of keeping everybody, you know, in their homes and not going out and doing their usual activities? Like, is Rossi still on schedule, or?
You know, I think the first answer is, of course, we've seen an impact, right? There's been no question, right? So everybody has taken a breath and is, you know, making sure everything is still fine. From a construction process, you know, we're going to have lost two months or more of building, so nothing is on the schedule it was before. And we'll see when that is allowed to begin to work safely for our staff and our contractors and subcontractors. So when that can work, move ahead safely, then we'll better know what that schedule is. You know, the interest in the site, yes, it's remained high, but we all just know that we have to take a breath here and figure out when we can move these pieces of the puzzle forward.
Yeah. I guess nobody's immune to that issue right now, right?
No, not at all. You know, we're being careful and trying to be appropriate, and then we're also using this time working with you, for instance, to, so we've, you know, we've gotten some of these pieces out of the way, and that when we can roll out and get the site work going on this side, for instance, you know, site work's one of those things that really can take place with lots of social distancing. So getting the infrastructure approved, or the infrastructure changes approved on this side is, will be a huge help when the restrictions are lifted.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
And Joan?
No, I don't have any comments at this time, thank you.
Hey, and my two cents, I guess I was curious how the, what your plans are for the Ortega House area, such as, you know, stabilizing the ground that you moved from, what you're planning to do with the garage, et cetera?
So the garage, right, and I guess we missed the note that the garage is being taken down. You know, I don't, we don't have any plans today for what that site will be.
Oh, well.
It will, you know, when you look at, and let me just.
I mean, you're going to leave a hole in the ground when you move the house, so I'm just curious what you're planning to do there to stabilize that?
No, I mean, yeah, okay, so yes, so no, the site should be graded out level, and that, we will clarify that. But, you know, kind of long-term here, you know, we're not sure what the best use of this property will be. It probably leans more towards the commercial rather than residential use, if you, as you look at the other residential, other uses along 44. But we don't have a user or a very specific plan in place, or I should say, we've probably got 27 plans that we've looked at, but nothing that.
Yep. All right, thanks for clarifying. And I think there was a mention of, I don't know if it was, might be something Eric brought up, but there's the new garage base there, and now you're opening up directly to the Newman House property on the east side. So make sure that you get proper screening there.
Yes, so all those, all right, so all those comments, and we agree that we'll provide some combination of fencing and landscaping along this border. We, yes, absolutely.
All right. Think we're good then, Nicole, for seeker.
I move that the planning board find that Eastdale Village Ninth amended site plan involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of negligible magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous seeker findings adopted March 15, 2018, as modified by the proposed incremental changes described in the Eastdale Village Correspondence and Assessment dated March 23, 2020.
Dr. Your motion moved in seconded for seeker, called to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Aye, for myself. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village Ninth amended site plan, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies. Set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, included but not limited to the following, 1 through 11, but also adding 12, that land bank parking be addressed in writing.
Second. Moved in seconded, grant conditional, called to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Do you have any architectural to present tonight?
Thank you. Well, I guess, maybe I'm confused about the architectural review. This is an existing house that isn't changing, but you still need architectural review for that?
No.
I think it depends upon.
I didn't know if you had anything else on any other buildings as well, so that's good. I move that we defer architecture for your Ortega House.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right.
Thank you all.
Good for now, Jeff. Good luck.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Next up, Item Equities.
Straighten straighten, ready.
Item Equities Incorporated at Modi, 23 Davis Avenue, minor subdivision and special use permit and site plan hearing. Who's on for Dr. Modi's application?
Hello, guys, Brian Stokoso, Dan Stokoso, Engineering with Ken Stanger here, applicant's attorney.
Welcome. Anything?
Um, here. Go ahead.
Just today, anything you want to bring up?
No, we just, we received the comments from the board. They seem reasonable. I brought Ken here tonight to kind of address the board's concerns regarding insured services associated with the subdivision and some cross easements of that nature. He's here to speak upon those concerns, and I'll give it to Ken right now.
All right.
So I've seen the comments, and I can tell you that we need to address within the agreement. The parking cross easement was provided to planning board council as a preliminary document. And so within the parking cross easement, which is paragraph two of the document, we can create additional rights for pedestrian traffic. We did not make provision in the parking cross easement for shared maintenance obligations, but we can just put that in a paragraph. Shared maintenance agreements are common, you've seen them most often, I think, on driveways, but I've done them with respect to these parking areas, and this is a very small parking area. So I would, under that paragraph of the, sorry, that portion of the document captioned the parking cross easements, I would add a new paragraph, paragraph three, that would set up in the mechanism, or set up an agreement that the parties will share certain functions of the site, such as maintenance of snow, such as maintenance of the parking integrity of the parking area itself, such as, I think, I think the trash location for this project is all on one lot and not one on each lot, so that would be a case as well. It's not a difficult document to add those amendments to. And with the board's permission, given those comments, I would just like to amend the document, and if the board felt comfortable with my representation, I would be happy to say, look, you know, if you wanted to proceed on this condition, make this a condition that I adequately address the board's concerns with respect to comment number one to the satisfaction of your attorney. And I think we can, I think we can do it fairly quickly. Unfortunately, practicing, you know, this remote world, I, the document stated on the 22nd, and if Brian and I weren't in different locations, most likely I would have seen this, and I might have had the document draft uploaded already. But that's comment number one. Comment number two, and I didn't, I can do this as well, but comment number two, I don't know, maybe this is from Eric, but it asks that I provide a written narrative in plain language explaining how the covenant will require future owners to manage the site use so as not to exceed parking demand and site capacity. One of the, in the second part of this document, you'll see a section titled Special Condition Six Covenant. And my intention there was to take what you had done in your prior site plan and make sure that it carried over into this new plan where you have two lots governed by the same condition. I had thought of this question, how do you prevent somebody from walking in and producing or suggesting, look, I'd like to change my use to this use, and now this use is going to throw off the parking because this use is going to be more parking intensive? And I thought I dealt with this at paragraph seven, and I think, and where paragraph seven of this section reads, "No owner of either parcel A or B shall commit any use of either lot, which shall increase the demand for parking on the site." That creates a self-policing mechanism. If I'm the owner of parcel A, and parcel B gets sold to a proposed use that's going to increase the parking, it's going to materially affect my use of my parking easement, my parking cross easement. So I'm going to go to court, or I'm going to express my displeasure to the neighbor, and I'm going to ask that that not happen. But one thing, I'm not only going to ask that it not happen, I am going to go to court and make sure it doesn't happen because it's going to affect me. But I think what we could also do here at paragraph seven is, it was really my intent in writing this, that if the planning board were, if someone approached the planning board with an application for use that would increase the demand for parking at that site, the planning board could just look at that and say, no, you can't do it. We're not going further than that because we have an agreement here that anyone who owns that lot will not permit a use with a greater parking demand than what we have here. So I thought what I would do at paragraph seven is add some language that would specifically give the town, or name, I'm not sure exactly how to write it yet as we speak, but to name the town as a party of interest with respect to paragraph seven, and give the town the ability to either, to enforce it or not, not an obligation to enforce. And one of the means by which it can be enforced is to relieve the planning board of an obligation to entertain an application that would contain such a use. I haven't figured the language out, but one of the things I thought we could say is we could say, and, "No owner of parcel A or B shall ever make an application to the town of Poughkeepsie for any approval of any use." And that kind of, that kind of language would take that circumstance out of a private conflict and actually take it to a bar that would be enforceable so that no such application would ever come to the planning board. That, in looking at that comment at paragraph seven, that's where I'm thinking how we address that issue. It's a good question, because I didn't fully, I know I intended to use that as a mechanism to prevent any use from being there, but I do think that I need to add some language in there that your lawyer would find effective and would approve of, that would make it clear that the planning board can look at an application that increases the use, increases the demand for parking, and say, look, no, here's the restriction, here's a condition of our approval, we're not entertaining it. And then not have, then not have to deal with going further down the process. That's what I'm thinking, and I think we can put that language together for the satisfac, to the satisfaction of your lawyer.
All right. Lisa, can you make any comments on it?
Sure. I have, we circulated to the board earlier today some draft resolutions, well, actually, one draft resolution for the site plan and special use combined, and then the draft negative declaration. And we apologize for the late circulation, but time gets busy. But we certainly, as conditions of those resolutions, we contemplate that the attorneys, whether it's town board attorney or planning board attorney, and Mr. Stanger will be able to work out the details that are needed to effectuate any of the conditions. And they are, you know, Ken presented a first draft, but there are comments that we'll have, that staff will have, and that the town attorney will have. And one of the conditions for final approval will be an agreement that's acceptable to all.
Okay, so you feel comfortable these agreements can be worked out, then?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Let me go to Eric next.
Sure. Well, that covers one of my first points, so thank you, Ken and Lisa. Yeah, the staff has prepared a resolution to, for a secret neg deck and subdivision site, this is a subdivision as well as site plan, special use permit approval, and of course, the concerns came up around the sharing of, the sharing of these uses between the lots. And I think Ken's statement and Lisa's determination to finalize the declaration is a good one. And that's actually captured in our comments, that that would be a condition of approval. So the, I guess, just the other items to call to your attention in the comments would be, one, staff was recommending that with the creation of lots, separate lots, that the previous census to gave, for the board to get feedback on reporting of the maintenance of employees, employees at the site, it was asserted that that number would. It was asserted that that number would not increase as a condition of the special use permit. That was just going to run from the site plan. We're suggesting that with the subdivision, that the census requirements also specify when there's two years from any change in lot ownership. And Lisa's draft resolution includes that language if the board is in agreement with it. The only other comments, some of them had to do with cleaning up the subdivision plat and the site plan. There seemed to be an overlap of information from one to the other. And if the board's okay with that, staff feels we can work that out with the plan preparers. Those are our comments.
If I could.
And of course, this is also a public hearing tonight, so the part of the resolution is to open a public hearing, and if you intend to proceed, to close it.
Yep, all right, thanks, Eric. Lisa, you were going to say so.
Right, if I could just add one clarification. The draft resolution that the board has is actually for three years from a change in ownership because the original board intent was three years from the granting of the C O. So what I've done in the draft is I've kept the three years. If the change of ownership occurs within the three years, then it would just be a total of three years from the last date. So if the change of ownership, three years out, so that we would have some ability to count to confirm that because of the change in ownership, no change in added demand for parking was created as a result of any change in use.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that was a sensitive issue. Parking is the most sensitive issue for this project, so appreciate all that work on that. It is a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone in the meeting that wishes to comment on this project tonight? Once again, if you are on the phone, you can unmute yourself by hitting star six. You can raise your hand by hitting star nine. And it doesn't look like anybody raising their hand. I move that the planning board close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Aye from myself. Motion passes seven to zero for closing the public hearing. Let's go around the board for comments, start with Nicole this time.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
All right, Rocco?
Nothing from here, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing from me.
Joan?
No, I have no comments, thank you.
Ben?
I think Ken and Eric have it pretty well covered, no comment.
And Peter?
Oh, yeah, in the language to grant the special use permit approval, I think it would be helpful to have that language specifically included. The staff recommended the proposed special use permit for proposed two lots be revised to additionally require a census by affidavit and so on. I think that language should be specified in the resolution, just so that there's no ambiguity.
Peter, this is Lisa Cobb, and it is in the draft resolution, which I actually don't have open in front of me at the moment, but the census by affidavit is specifically listed, called out in the special use permit slash site plan resolution.
It's, the resolution that I have, it's not spelled out, that's why I asked the question.
Okay, we can take a look at it, and we can, with that condition.
All right, look at it. If you don't find it, please include it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Peter. And I think my issues were answered as well. The shared maintenance agreement is, needs to be worked out. New access to the trash, et cetera, from both lots. And I guess we're ready for, for secret.
I move that the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the item equities Inc., Modi 23 Davis Avenue subdivision, special use permit and site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated April 30th, 2020.
Second. It's removed and seconded for secret, called to question, all those in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional minor subdivision approval for item equities Inc., Modi 23 Davis Avenue, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to the following, one through six.
Second.
So should, and this is a question for Eric, this is Lisa Cobb again. Should that last resolution be approval for the subdivision and then the, oh, never mind, we got it as a separate, never mind.
Yeah, there's a separate resolution, first subdivision, then special use permit and site plan.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion that's been made in seconded for conditional minor subdivision approval. Called to question, all those in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board adopt the attached resolution in the matter of item equities Inc., Modi 23 Davis Avenue, for conditional special use permit and site plan approval, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to the following, one through seven.
And plus Peter's comment eight, which is technically a comment to the planning board, but yes.
Right, I was going to say that might be covered by seven, but could dispel.
Yeah, comment number eight would be with regard to these annual parking census.
Could dispel it out.
And eight for parking.
Add parking census to the resolution. Okay, second. Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, guys, you're good to go.
Appreciate it, thank you, guys.
Brian, if, at some point, you may want to give a call so we can work out the presentation of information between the site plan and subdivision and what's required each of those.
He may have already left, Eric.
Okay.
Catch up with him, he's got conditions to work through. Next up is 44 LaGrange Avenue special use permit and site plan hearing for proposed replacement of single-family residence with a mixed-use development at 44 LaGrange Avenue. Who's here tonight for that application?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, who's speaking? Right, what has transpired since your last here?
Guys, hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. We did a resubmission since our last meeting back in February, and there were changes from the last site plan that you, can I share my screen?
Yes.
Sure, yep. Yep, that'll be good.
Okay, if I can figure out how to do that. Here we go. Can you hear me still?
Yes, we do.
Yep. Yes, staff's about him somewhere.
Okay, so since the last submission, we reduced parking at 39 LaGrange from eight spaces to seven.
We're not seeing this, we're not seeing the shared screen yet.
Okay.
If you're trying to show the plan, oh, there we go, there we go.
How's that?
Yep, now it's coming up, there we go.
Now we got it. All right, go ahead.
Last submission, we reduced the parking at 39 LaGrange, the shared parking for 44. Seven, there's an existing two-car garage that we're going to retain. So now seven parking spaces. Those seven satisfy the residential component for 44 LaGrange. In addition, the other change was a refusing closure has been located on the, let's see here, at this location right here, it's on the southwest corner of the proposed building, 44 LaGrange. I'd like to know, because I went through some of the comments from the different departments, particularly the fire department, this, that refusing closure does not, it's not covered. There is a roof overhang about 12 feet above that's on the building line. I'm going to switch to a different. Floor plan, in this restaurant proposal or floor plan, it's not sort of set in stone, but generally, this would be the idea. And on this lower corner here, if I can, and is where the refusing closure would be located. Those are the two minor changes since you last saw this. And I don't know if I need to go with further presentation, but.
Yep, it looks good.
This is a public hearing.
All right, thanks, so you, the big changes, you're keeping the garage, it seems, versus?
Yes, the two-car garage, we're going to retain. It's in pretty good state, there's no reason to really remove it. And then in terms of, we've widened the handicap area, the loading area, from five feet to eight feet. There is one handicap spot right over here. Oh, we relocate more toward the center of the, in the property toward here, so it's not bleeding light to neighboring properties. There was some comments from the engineers about the lighting levels, so I can revise those. Also, comment about concern from the town engineer about this spot right here. I, but turning motion here. The other issue is that, I'll bring up, cars that are parked in the garage, if all of these spots are taken, these cars would have to back out. Really no way around it, and it's, LaGrange Avenue, from time to time, it's pretty quiet. I know during, or at least when it's not COVID-19, that tends to be a peak, but other than that, it's pretty quiet, so.
All right. Let's go, let me go to Eric, see what comments he's got.
Sure. And John, if you discuss, have more discussion with the board, again, I'll just observe, it sounds like you might be on a speaker phone, and you might do better if you turn the speaker off and go direct, because a lot of your words were cutting out. Let's see, the staff, we prepared a recommendation for the board for a secret negative declaration. This is an uncoordinated review, and one of the issues for this review was the fact that there are some fairly significant area variances due from the zoning board appeals. So we're recommending only a secret neg deck at this point, if the board is comfortable with that, because we don't think any of the issues in our comments rise to the level of secret significance if the board's in agreement. So with that said, it would then go to the zoning board, and depending on what they did, it would then come back to the planning board again. So you would know what the zoning board did about those variances for impervious surface, for setbacks, for open space, and for impervious surface. And then you could continue with site plan review. The applicant would have a chance to respond to the comments that are, to the conditions that are in front of you now. In particular, for the board, I guess, what you might want to talk about with the applicant about is, number one, with the, the demand for parking on area streets is not very high. Neighbors, there were a couple of comments from neighbors, I think, about that. There's a total, if the board grants 50% waiver, there's a total demand of seven, seven spaces or so, or nine, 14 spaces, seven to be provided at 39 LaGrange. That's for the board to consider. I think the bigger issue is the engineers' comment about a turnaround area. We just want to observe that the previous plan showed seven spaces in a line, which would have provided, without the garage, which would have provided adequate turnaround. Perhaps the applicant can address that for next time, but the board may want to weigh in on your thoughts on backing down the driveway to the road. Secondly, for the board, the refuse area, we just want to understand, how is that going to be addressed for a restaurant, if it's a restaurant use? Are you going to have a grease dumpster there? And is there sufficient room in that outdoor area to provide for refuse, for mixed uses residential and also restaurant? And then the board may want to discuss with the applicant, are you comfortable with the density of use here? It's the Arlington area where things are packed together, that's fine. But the board, if you're concerned about parking, do you want to restrict uses, like a fast food restaurant or not? I think any restaurant fits in here, but that's up to the board. Those are our comments.
All right, thanks, Eric. Let me go to Don for any, any concerns from engineering standpoint.
I just want to mention that on the, part of the initial comments, I lowered my volume, does that help?
That, we can hear you okay?
Oh, we proposed two 750-gallon grease traps for the restaurant use. The town engineer and the sewer department asked initially if we could provide 2,000 gallons, but I had our engineer look at this. He informed me that the criteria that they were looking for is almost 14 toilets being flushed at the same time, so 2,000 gallons seemed a bit excessive. We're proposing 2750-ton tanks, which should be full of 1,500. So there would be no grease trap in the refuse area. The grease traps are located below the side of 44 LaGrange. The proposed refuse area is five feet by 13 feet, and we felt it's adequate for re-residential apartments, and restaurants could have a larger container for their trash.
Okay. Don, can you comment on that?
Sure. I think the biggest issue is, you know, the circulation and backing out. If we're going to provide that many parking spaces, then that's what's going to have to happen. As Eric mentioned before, it was a little different, but it's really up to the board as to how many parking spaces you think are necessary at this location. As far as the grease traps, we do size the grease traps per New York State D E C design standards. Um, we haven't wavered it in the past, I don't know if we will this time, but, um, I'm sure we can work that out.
Mm-hmm, all right.
Well, I don't think we were looking for a waiver, but just it seemed two thousand gallons for this type of restaurant seemed a bit much. Um, it's, you know, there's not a, it's not a huge area, and also, you know, really, the restaurant component at this point is unknown.
Yeah, we've been, we've been sizing the, we've been sizing grease traps this way, uh, for the last ten or fifteen years at the request of the, of the source superintendent, I, you know, if he wants to make an allowance, um, we're more than, you know, we'll be agreeable to that.
All right, thanks, Don. Uh, this is a, Don for a public hearing, so at this point, I move you up in the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in seconded, call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which is to speak on this project tonight? Remember to unmute your phone with a star six, or raise your hand with star nine. Or raise your hand with the Zoom chat feature.
We did receive one email, um, today, very late in the day.
Okay.
Um, if you thought I can read that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
All right. Uh, this is from a Loretta, Loretta Brunello. Good afternoon, I live at sixty-two LaGrange Avenue and oppose the current proposed use of the property on the corner of LaGrange and Fairmont Avenue. This intersection is a school bus stop with no crosswalks. According to previous file maps, it only had a use for a single-family home with several easements in the rear on Fairmont. The applicant seems to think that there can be parking by the graveyard, which I would correct to be cemeteries, with active cemetery events. We get the traffic, excuse me, I'm reading this off my phone, so, we get the traffic, uh, as it is from Billy Bob's, and it becomes unruly at times. The cemetery also has the same street use for their own, uh, for their own parcels, funerals, visitations, ceremony as well. There are homes on this street that also utilize the spaces in front of their homes that they pay tax on for parking. Parking across the street for the tenants is ridiculous. The hair salon does use the space for his clients as well as the tenant that lives in the back in a one-bedroom apartment, according to assessor's cards. Where can he put his tenants? It is not right to just distribute them on our frontage, a commercial space. Underneath these three one-bedroom apartments certainly will cause some traffic interruptions, as Billy Bob's does. Please table this, the applicant really doesn't seem to care about this neighborhood, just by watching his appearance and smart remarks about the quality of life we have here, best regards. And that was received today at three oh nine, uh, by Carol in the planning office.
All right. Anyone else, uh, on the call tonight, just to comment?
The person labeled Resident LaGrange raised a hand, but then lowered it, so I don't know if that was an accident or intentional.
I'm sorry, Lisa, what was that?
The person that's on the phone listed as Resident LaGrange, uh, raised their hand while you were reading and then lowered it. So I don't know if that was an accidental hand raise or an intentional hand raise.
Okay, yes.
Or maybe that was.
Uh, and I see the mic is unmuted, is there someone at, uh, who's, would be Resident LaGrange? Okay, I guess.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll continue this, we're gonna adjourn it, so I moved, that we adjourned the public hearing to June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob? And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Hearing adjourned, motion passes seven to zero. All right, let's go around the board for some comments, start with, uh, Peter.
I just, two items, one, this is our second request, uh, to provide the existing easement, sure it'd be the adjacent property on forty-four LaGrange. We'd like to see that easement, because obviously, things, they're very tight. So if you could get that to us, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, the applicant submitted the easement, both submissions, so.
Okay. Uh, the other item I have is, in your declaration of common parking, and I would address this to Lisa Cobb. Article three in the Declaration of Common Parking reads as follows. In the event that forty-four LaGrange and thirty-nine LaGrange shall no longer be under common ownership of control. Then, in that event, the tenant and employee parking set forth in the site plan application shall be removed. There shall be one parking lot light on thirty-nine LaGrange, and the premises shall be restored to its condition prior to the installation of the additional parking contemplated by the site plan application. Notwithstanding, the tenant parking shall remain. Isn't that sort of a unilateral nullification of a, of a very important condition of approval?
Yes, the town would not approve an agreement that contains that provision for as long as this building exists and, um, that, that has apartment spaces in it that requires parking. The parking that's on thirty-nine, that's proposed on thirty-nine will need to be, will need to remain.
All right, then, we either have to, have to eliminate three, or amend it somehow, so that we're not giving the applicant, they're basically the right to declare that null and void at their own discretion.
But when the board gets to the point where it's doing a final approval for this, or perhaps if we have time prior to the final approval, um, we will work out, but in any event, the final declaration will need to be acceptable to the town.
Like I always say, plan ahead.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, that's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Peter.
Peter, this is Eric, this is Eric, and just, uh, comment number, the applicant is gonna come back to the planning board, and one of the comments that they are being asked, if the board adopts all of the department's comments, uh, comment number five talks about the declaration of comment, and it, it points out exactly the apparent discrepancy you pointed out. So they'll, they're being asked to address that for their next appearance in front of the planning board.
You're the best.
Yep, I see that now, great. Thanks, Eric. All right, Ben, do you have anything?
Parking, of course, and I'm not thoroughly convinced about these grease traps, uh, and I'd like to see what the ZBA has to say. That's it right now.
All right. Uh, Nicole?
A lot of my comments have already been talked about, but one thing, I just had a question for the applicant. Uh, the water department had stated that maybe you should connect to the water main on Fairmount, uh, Fairmont instead of, uh, LaGrange Avenue, have you talked to them about that?
I have not, but I did see the comment, and that's, we have no problem with that.
Yeah, they just said, uh, I, that it would be closer, um, you know, for you, so.
Mm-hmm.
That was it.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Uh, Rocco?
Yeah, I think I have to, uh, ask more about the, the parking, because it seems like we're starting to develop this part of the Arlington area here, and, uh, with the, uh, other restaurant there, Billy Bob's and all the houses there. Uh, maybe they need to do more of a study.
All right.
Especially if there's, it looks like, I, I know they said it isn't, uh, uh, it may not be a restaurant, but I believe I counted sixty seats, uh, in there, did a quick count, plus a bar area, which probably had another ten or fifteen seats, so that's another seventy-five, so, uh, that's a lot of people at the peak, and those streets are narrow and, uh, they're not that long. That's my comment, thank you.
All right. Bob?
Uh, yeah, I have, uh, just a question about the commercial space, you have thoughts about what you're looking to put in there, type of business?
Uh, Chris, you want to speak to?
Do you have?
Yeah.
Loud and clear.
Okay, yes, sir, what kind of questions you have?
Uh, the commercial space, what, what do you envision going in there, what type of business?
Uh, definitely an eatery of some sort.
And any thoughts about what the hours of operation would be?
It would be roughly, probably three or four o'clock, dinnertime, and ten o'clock close.
And, and with, with some residents above the eatery?
Yes.
They'd be exposed to cars coming and going as late as ten o'clock?
I would probably assume so, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the tenants, the, the town knows.
Doesn't sound like an ideal situation for people living there, but.
Well, we're gonna do what we can, if, you know, if things work out, you know, we'll do what we can to kinda make some good sound barriers, uh, with, you know, construction, and, uh, at least we could try to, you know, do something with that. But it is a busy area to begin with, you know, and, um, I mean, it's, you know, it, it would be something that, you know, if you were to, you know, rent an apartment there, it would be something that you would, you would have to accept. You know, you, you know, you're, you're in a busy area, in a busy intersection, you know, right next door to a college, you know, so, you know, there's a, there's a, a closed boutique, there's another restaurant, there's a salon, um, so it's, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, if I was to rent an apartment there, I would probably expect something, a busy area.
Yeah, well, I think one thing to have businesses down the street, but one right underneath real living is a little different, but that's.
I understand.
This is my, you know.
Hi, this is Nicole.
My feeling about, um, you know, those kinds of businesses.
Yeah, Nicole?
Sorry, sorry, I just wanted to chime in for a second. Um, Bob, um, a lot of times, people want to live on top of restaurants and really close to restaurants. This way, they can, um, walk to eateries, um, especially when you have Vassar College right around the corner. Um, it's, I'm sure for a lot of students, or people even, um, you know, working part ti- you know, part-time or on a temporary basis would probably love that type of situation where they're living right above an eatery, so they can come home whatever time, you know, go downstairs, grab food, go back upstairs, that type of thing. Um, so, I mean, o- obviously, it won't be ideal for everyone, but I think that, um, you know, being so close to Vassar there, uh, it could be a really great, for the right person, or right people.
All right. Anything further, Bob?
No, that's it, I mean, it's obviously a personal choice for whoever wants to live there, but.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Joan?
Um, yeah, I have concerns about the parking, um, I guess I'm really not comfortable with not having dedicated parking for residential space. Also, um, I'd like to ask the applicant, is there a residential tenant at thirty-nine LaGrange Avenue?
Uh, for the moment, yes, but she's not gonna be there, is, uh, Anthony, Anthony, you on the?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, 'cause the only reason I'm, I'm bringing it to you, because I know you, you're dealing with this issue.
Yeah, she's supposed to be gone by May fifteenth, um, everything with the COVID is, hasn't delayed anything, as far as I know, so we're on schedule for, for May fifteenth.
And when that individual vacates, is there any intention to have another occupant?
Well, for, for the meantime, me and Chris are gonna use it as our office. So, other than that, we don't have any plans, you know, we're kinda trying to get everything in order, and we have to do some things back there to get it ready to be in office, so, pretty much, we're just gonna use it for now.
Okay, and my last comment, which may be a little premature, for the driveway from the parking area, would you have that lit?
Absolutely.
Okay, 'cause it looks like there's kind of a long stretch there that could be dark.
Well, the thing is, if, if we, if everything go, all goes well with, you know, the garage and the layout of the parking situation, uh, along the house or the, the building, we're gonna have lots of lights where you're seeing that dark area. And, um, if the garage is, if everything can stay, we're gonna put lights, more lights on the garage to face towards the parking lot, plus the lights that our architect, John, he proposed to put up, so it'll be very bright.
Okay, well, not too bright, we gotta find the, uh.
For sure.
I think it'll be okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to speak on the light, we're proposing one light, and this is the only light on the site, for the parking area. The, um, it should also be noted that these, these parking spaces at thirty-nine LaGrange are, they satisfy all the parking requirements for the residential use at forty-four LaGrange.
So will the square space be dedicated for the occupants, for the residential occupants? Will there be the required spaces dedicated there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, should also be noted that there, if you combine all the uses, the residential at forty-four, the commercial use at forty-four LaGrange, the commercial use at thirty-nine LaGrange, there are fourteen parking spaces required. We're satisfying fifty percent of those, which alcohol is allowed. So, I just, it's, um, important to kinda understand that, especially the residential component is being satisfied.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, that's a necessity, because of winter time, you're not allowed to park on the street, so.
Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
And all the people here is gonna pick the bus.
I mean, imagine this would, as an eatery, you'd get a lot of walk-ins from Vassar as well, less parking that way, but residential has to be covered. Uh, from my two cents, I just want to ask the, for, for the, since you decided to keep the garage, would that, would any of those spaces, either of those spaces be assigned to the, uh, to a resident of forty-four LaGrange, or is that your own use or something?
Yep, all right, he can figure out which tenant will get a garage spot.
Okay, so you will be able to use one of those, use those two garage spaces, that's good.
The only reason why we bring up, only reason why we want to keep the garage is, it's really in good shape. And if it, you know, if it wasn't in good shape, you know, it wouldn't be an issue, we'd take it down, and, but it's just a shame if we, if we have to take that down.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's always, always better to have your car sheltered from the snow and such.
I guess, yeah, absolutely.
The only question is, is that what Eric brought up, you know, the turning radius there to make sure you can figure that out?
Sure.
Um, all right. Let's see what else, and then from the restaurant, I think, you know, what, what five was trying to get at?
I spoke out of turn.
Whoop, somebody talking?
Yeah, that was me, and I, I wanted to apologize, I think I spoke out of turn, or you said, you said Dom, but I'd sound like John.
Okay. Uh, just wanted to say, uh, you were asking about the type of eatery, I think one concern we had with the parking, that it's not a, like a, a fast food chain kind of.
No.
Proposal. More like, more of a local eatery, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great.
And there was a comment that, that, you know, that, uh, one of the resident, Loretta Brunello, um, she says, I don't care about the neighborhood. I really do care about the neighborhood, that, I don't want, I wouldn't want to do anything like that, I, tell you the truth, I, I'm trying to do everything I can to kinda keep it a neighborhood, you know what I mean? So, uh, John came up with a great design to keep it, you know, not looking like a, you know, a building, or like a home, you know, so. My, you know, I just want to let you, let you know that, you know, I, I will take her comments and, you know, consider them, but, you know, I definitely care about the neighborhood.
Good to hear where your thought process is at. All right, um, I think we're ready to move forward, seeker?
I moved to the planning board as an involved agency undertaking an uncoordinated seeker review, determined that forty-four LaGrange Avenue's special use permit, the site planned project, would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment. specially used permit, the site plan project would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that no environment impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded for Seeker.
A second.
Called to question, all is in favor by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero for Seeker.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application as incomplete and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through nine.
Tucker? Moved and seconded to defer, called to question, all is in favor by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. I guess you gotta schedule a visit to the CBA next. John, if you wouldn't mind, uh, unsharing your screen, that would be great. Next up is Medley USA Group Site Plan Review.
Thank you, guys.
Building at North Grand Avenue, two fifty-nine North Grand. The application was not going to move forward, so I moved that the planning board dismissed the site plan application for this project for failure to prosecute the application.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up is Central Hudson and After Corner Substation. Public hearing has been closed at the last meeting. Site plan review for new substation at nineteenth Spring Road. I see Brian on now.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Anthony Morando, how are you? Anthony Morando from.
And Anthony on, okay, great.
I'm here tonight with, uh, well, not here, but somewhere, with Brian Demisco and, uh, from Central Hudson and Greg Lieberman from EDR. First, uh, this is my first time before the town of the last two months, so I just wanna recognize the board and the town staff. Um, I know how much effort you've all put in to keep the town open and keep the processes moving for these applications, and um, I know how hard it's been to work in compliance with the governor's orders, so I just wanna extend a, um, a recognition for making that happen. Um, it's particularly relevant for Central Hudson, given it is a public entity and we're trying to provide an essential service, so when you see the town continuing to move, um, it's, uh, it's encouraging, so thank you for that. We've made several presentations over the last twenty months, we've made several application filings, um, several follow-up, several responses to comments. And, you know, the board closed the hearing on February, on February twentieth, closed the public comment period on March first, uh, meaning the public comment portion of the process has been completed. Um, in response to some requests we received uh, from the board, um, at the close of the hearing, EDR updated the site plans. Uh, tonight, we have a, uh, just a couple topics to go through with the board, um, which you mentioned last time. Uh, we're gonna try to keep that discussion brief. Uh, Greg from EDR will briefly touch on the updates regarding vegetation and plantings. Um, we've bolstered the planting again, uh, we've increased some initial planting heights and strategic locations. Um, and I think Greg wanted to talk through some planting considerations with the board, uh, with respect to encouraging growth of the plants and, uh, vegetative screening. Uh, Greg also going to update you on a request, uh, your request at the last meeting to um, connect with the town engineers again. Um, that occurred, and, um, again, they discussed the information that was presented at the public hearing regarding um, the site location constraints and, and related issues, so, uh, Greg will provide you with an update with that. At this point, I'll hand it over to Greg, just to start that.
Uh, thanks, Anthony, this is Greg with EDR. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Everybody see my, the planting plan?
Yep.
Perfect. Uh, so as Anthony stated, we submitted updated site plans in March, uh, of twenty twenty in response to comments made during the February public hearing. Uh, specifically edits were made to the planting plan in response to suggestions made by the board. As a quick reminder, the plant sizes included in the prior plans, uh, were six foot tall. Uh, EDR's landscape architects deemed these consistent with generally accepted protocols for successful plant growth. For instance, Cornell University's Horticultural Institute indicates that, uh, larger trees oftentimes can have a slower or a stunted growth pattern, and our primary goal is to get these plants to reach their full, uh, potential, full growth potential. So in the northern planting area here, the evergreen trees that have been proposed were proposed as six-foot-tall ball-and-burlap trees, which are fairly sizable uh, trees that we think will do very well at this location. Uh, however, we did adjust the plant sizes in this area to include taller trees and to include eight-to-ten-foot trees at strategic locations that were identified by the public during, uh, the public hearing. So you can see here where my cursor is going, the larger radius trees are in fact eight-to-ten-foot-tall, uh, evergreen trees. Uh, this results in an increased tree height of up to four feet at these locations and further enhances an already robust vegetative screen. Also note numerous plants were added as infill within the existing cleared distribution corridor right here, offering substantial screening from west of Kerr Road and the north within what is currently an open view towards the electrical infrastructure. In total, after incorporating the board's concerns, or, I'm sorry, incorporated the board's requests, uh, we're proposing more than a hundred and eighty plants, including fifty-six evergreen trees, of which nineteen are to be planted as eight-to-ten-foot-tall trees. This increased plant height is anticipated to directly block cross-sectional views from adjacent properties, and minimize concern regarding line of sight. I wanna remind the board that there'll be no proposed regularly, regular lighting at the substation. Uh, therefore, the nighttime line of sight concerns raised there by the public, uh, during the public hearing and submitted in diagrams to the town will be avoided. Also, it's worth noting that the existing one hundred-foot-wide stretch of trees, uh, that will be remaining and the new plantings that are proposed will substantially block an obscure visibility, essentially eliminating views of isolated let's go to, uh, bear with me here. Minimizing the views of these thin linear bands of equipment. Uh, the mature trees are anticipated to block much of these views as the trees are taller than this proposed equipment. And it's also worth noting that the substation itself is over two hundred and twenty feet away from the northern property line, and the actual distance from the homes to the substation equipment is even further because the homes are located north of the property line and the substation equipment is located, uh, within the fence line, so there's an overlap there. Much of this information has been provided in previous filings, and just for convenience and ease, uh, for the board's consideration, this was summarized, uh, most recently in our January twenty-seventh memo on aesthetics. So those are essentially the changes to the planting plan. Uh, we're happy to discuss this further or address any questions the board may have with respect to the plantings. Also, as you know, we did meet with the town engineer, as Anthony alluded to, on March twelfth, regarding, uh, physical constraints precluding us from pushing the substation any further south. Uh, we presented this information before at the public hearing. Uh, we've also provided information on the record on this in detail, and we've provided some updated graphics. I'm happy to discuss that again if that would be helpful to the board, or happy to talk through any changes to the planting plan.
All right, thank you. Anything further, Brian, this time?
Sorry, I was, uh.
I think Greg is gonna continue.
Yeah, so, yeah, i- if, if the board wanted us to continue with describing, uh, the, the information that was in the prior memos, we're happy to do that and prepared to do that, but we wanted to give the board an opportunity if they wanted to, um, discuss the plantings or have, um, any further conversation, Greg has already said.
All right, well, as long as you're talking about the plantings, is, is Carol on?
Uh, yes, I am.
Yes. Did you get a chance to take a look?
I ran out there last evening. Um, it's, uh, I, what I, I would like to see, for the, for the most part, this looks like it, it will screen to a reasonable extent. There are not too many places that, um, there's a significant concern about, um. First of all, I concur with Andy and with Central Hudson that it's really not feasible to move this, uh, substation any further. Um, there are just too many constraints and the, the detriments, the environmental detriments would far outweigh the benefits of just, um, you know, to the few, um, folks out there is regarding vegetative screening. Um, my, my one concern is there's a couple of places, I guess, uh, Spring Road, twenty-three Spring Road and twenty-seven Spring Road, the, the ones down in the corner, there's no screening for those folks. Um, right there, yeah, that, those two parcels where you're that one and, and the, and the one further south, the one directly east of that parcel, right? I guess that would be Bo- Bollinger and Gaza. Um, is there a reason why there was no screening proposed for there?
Uh, first, this is Greg from EDR, there are, this, this tree line is an existing tree line, and this tree line are existing trees on the properties here. One of the limitations is the proximity of the property line in relation to existing transmission and distribution infrastructure. So there are some limitations with what we could plant there and how the planting would, where it would need to be located. Um, so that, that would be, that, that's probably the primary issue, but these, this tree band and this tree band are existing at that location.
Yeah, I guess the, the clear view is right where your cursor is right now. That's completely open.
Yeah, and this is Anthony, uh, Morando. I think the, the issue that, that you run into there, um, is, like Greg said, it's, it's in a, it's in a corridor with distribution and, and transmission infrastructure, and Central Hudson is limited, um, by the PSC and, and applicable regulations that they can't put trees that will grow to a danger height, um, in there. Um, so there's, there's limitations. I mean, as you can see by what we've done elsewhere, it's not a, a lack of intent or desire to put more, uh.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, no, I was just, those, those are the two, the two places it's probably most substantial, especially this, uh, Bollinger. It's probably more substantial impact to that particular resident than any of the others.
I think one, one thing I would just also, um, remind folks up here is, in the current substation, from a nighttime lighting standpoint, there will be none, whereas this is currently lit, so I think that even though it, it, you know, there may not be a, a, a tree or two here, um, I think that the overall style of the substation in that it's a, you know, elimination of some of the bus work, elimination of some of the above-ground structures and the lack of lighting, I think are overall, um, positives in terms of what's there today versus what will be there tomorrow from those properties' vantage points. In other words, what's in this corridor now is still very much electric infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, from a, from a change of view, uh, I, I think it's fairly safe to say that it is a current electrical corridor and will remain an electrical corridor.
Okay, I understood, that's fine. Um, I haven't had a, a lot of time to review this, I've just received it, but, um, I guess what I would like to see is, um, either a little bit of staggering at, at the, um, uh, that one line of trees, and the other thing is, there are a lot of outcroppings, rock outcroppings, and there is some significant topography there. So, it would be nice to have, um, that plan basically with just some five-foot contours. Um, you know, the proposed substation, the boundaries, five-foot contours, the right-of-ways that are maintained, and the proposed landscaping on that plan. Uh, the reason it'd be nice to go out and then just specifically cite some things because you, you're gonna get a landscaper in there who's just gonna go say, "Well, they're supposed to go right here." And because of the rock outcropping or the depth of soil that they can get to, they're just going to move off ten, fifteen feet wherever they can put the plant. And then they might put it someplace where it's serving no purpose for screening.
I think that, uh, so, I think you're correct in that there is a lot of topography in the area here where my cursor is going, and we'll speak to that here shortly. And for the purposes of clarity.
Even up on the top, ironic, there's, there's some topography up there also.
Okay. We, we had taken the, we had taken the contours off just for clarity, but we can certainly put the contours on here and, um, and we can certainly provide some additional notes about final plant placement of landscaping so that it's done under the direction of the project, of EDR Project Landscape Architect and Central Hudson, so that that tree is put in or as close to that spot as possible to, to the intent of this plan.
You can perhaps move it away from that line a little bit closer. If, if you have the, the trees closer to the property line, um, that often will provide, um, a, a better screening than right up, you know, they're screening from the property line, basically, as opposed to screening the fence.
Sure, so, the, the, well, noted, and these trees, I completely agree, Carol, these trees here were placed in areas that were previously cleared that we could get plants up close to the property line. These trees here, uh, follow, we really tried to not clear into this existing woodlot, so that's why they're placed kind of in this soldier course at this location, and the idea is the existing woodlot of mature trees with this additional evergreen hedge is, with these additional evergreen trees is going to provide a robust, uh, screening. Um, overall, uh, from a wide vantage point, including these trees here, in fact, early in the process, we had submitted at the optimal location, which was closer up here in the flat area.
Mm-hmm.
And based on comments from the board back in twenty eighteen, this was shifted over fifty feet to the south already, and in doing so required us to, uh, make some concessions with the grading here and including extending a proposed retaining wall out a little further to give us a much more suitable planting bed to further screen from the west on Kerr. So, it, it, it looks as if, it, we, we really pushed, and this is a hundred and eighty trees in this site, there's, or a hundred and eighty plants with fifty-six evergreen trees, so we're really trying to make sure we get it robust. Um, but we also wanna make sure they grow well. So we, we're trying to be mindful of our spacing and mindful of the sizes so that we can accommodate the screening that we need to accommodate, but also making sure that they'll do well.
Right, no, of, of course, and I, I would like to see that whatever you are planting there has the best opportunity, and, and, and that's why I, I'm just curious as to, you know, like I said, there's a lot of rock outcropping even up on the top of this and some topography, and if we can move a few, we might not need quite as many. We might be able to shift them a little bit, but that's something that has to be done in the field as opposed to, uh, in the office on paper. So, it, it might be beneficial on, you know, for the town, for Central Hudson, for the folks there. Um, just to have a, like, you know, a field meeting just to review this one more time.
Thanks, Carol.
In a practical situation.
Yeah, and I, I think one thing we wanted you to think about is, you know, the, the size of the trees proposed, some six foot, some eight-to-ten feet, and the closeness of them, you know, with their survivability would be, and we want to definitely look into the, make sure that they do survive.
Yeah, I think that's the main concern has been to make, just making sure that the, that, you know, there's enough time that those trees can really take and that they're likely to, uh, to last, you know, establish themselves.
Yeah, 'cause Central Hudson does not wanna be married to this for several years, watering them, of course, you're going to be doing that the first year anyway. But, um, you'd like them to, uh, you know, re- really carefully, um, hire your landscaper to make sure that they are not just, you know, digging the smallest hole possible and dropping them in, you really want them to, to do everything on the up and up, to give them the best possible opportunity to survive.
Yeah, all of that, um, makes sense, and we have worked out this plan with, uh, Central Hudson's, uh, forestry crew in terms of identifying species that we think are gonna be pretty hardy at this location. Um, and making sure that when these go in the ground that they're getting, that they're getting every chance to, to, uh, to take, take off, and EDR landscape architects have been involved with that, so, in terms of the spacing and the sighting of these, so we, that all makes a ton of sense, and I think that we have a plan that is very workable, and I think that we can, um, you know, however, however the process is, if it's a site visit, if it's adding some topography information to this, to the planting plan, which is our, I mean, this topo was already in the drawing set.
Right, it's not a, it's not a big deal.
I think there are some practical things that we can do to, uh, to address your concerns, Carol. I think that's totally doable.
Yeah, the, the, the folks who, they came up with this in Central Hudson, ha- have they actually been on the site and worked on this planting plan, or is it just from the office? That's, I guess that's key.
Um, nope. We've actually, going back to, uh, April of 2019, there was a site walk planned, uh, with the staff from the town, and, um, this was actually all staked out. So the locations of these are pretty well-known. For instance, there, this area's gonna be all unfilled, so we have some control with, with the, the, we have full control of the planting medium there. Uh, here, uh, any, any rock that, that we think we're gonna encourage here, I think we'll be okay at the elevations we're dealing with, and those run more in a linear north-to-south band, so I think we'll have plenty of flexibility to work up there. So this has been developed through field evaluations with EDR's landscape architects and in concert with Central Hudson staff.
All right. Uh, thanks, guys, for discussing this. We can, uh, take it off a little bit more discussion with staff, but we wanna make sure that, make sure these trees are surviving correctly. Uh, let me go to, uh, to Kristen.
So the application is essentially on this evening, uh, for the board to discuss and review with the applicant. Um, the planning board, you know, staff's recommending that the planning board will either find that there's more information required, um, and defer action on the application, or that they will essentially not be requesting additional information, um, and, and, and deferring action, um, at this time. Uh, Lisa Cobb, the council for the town, might have, um, some additional insights. We also have Don Beer. Um, I think Andy Lern, who met with the EDR team, um, is also on the line and had sat, uh, at the request of the planning board, um, to have a, a discussion following the last appearance. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to them.
All right, thanks, Kristen.
Sorry.
Who wants to start first, Don or, or Andy?
Um, I can, I can speak, uh, to the, to, to the, the meeting that we had. Um, you know...
Who is speaking? Who is speaking?
It's Andy Lern.
Uh, thank you very much. I have, this is the reporter. I have to know who each person is that's speaking. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lern.
Sure. Uh, so, you know, I think that the, 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 the diagram that, um, that was provided, uh, is really, uh, pretty telling and kind of summarizes the, the discussions that we had, um, about the limitations. Um, you know, the, the thing that really stands out, um, it's not really in my area of expertise, but it's, it, it, it's pretty telling with this, this diagram, is the proximity of the existing power lines to the, uh, the proposed, the current, uh, location, proposed location of the substation. And, and, and what Greg kind of emphasized, uh, during our meeting was the fact that these lines have to remain active and, um, you know, the, the, the substation will have to be constructed, um, under these active power lines. Um, I understand that the existing, one of the existing lines will be temporarily relocated to allow the, the, the substation to be constructed in this, in the location shown now. Um, and moving it further north will, um, I, 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 I guess it's possible, and like we've been saying, you know, it's possible to, to engineer this, the site to do a lot of things, but if it's practically, practically wise, um, it really doesn't make a lot of sense from a safety standpoint. Um, so that's the first, first, um, key point that I'll make. Um, the other, the other is the, the, uh, the excavation and the bedrock and the steep slopes. Um, you know, I think that by moving the substation further south, um, you're gonna end up with, I know, you'll end up with a lot of rock removal, um, that's gonna, it can't be blasted, so you're gonna end up with, um, a lot of, um, rock hammering, you're gonna, it's gonna be noise. Um, the, there's also, they've indicated that they would probably need retaining walls, um, which is also another safety issue for workers there. Uh, and then, you know, the other main issue is, uh, with stormwater and that, um, you know, the, the, the DEC Stormwater Design Manual, uh, requires sites like this to have some form of infiltration. Um, it's called runoff reduction, which usually requires infiltration. And, uh, by moving the site, and currently the site, as everyone probably knows by now, um, it's, it's made of stone, and the stone allows the water to land on it to infiltr- go down and infiltrate into the ground underneath. Um, if they have to build this on bedrock, um, they lose that ability, and they end up having to build a separate facility, most likely in the location where, um, the substation is shown now. So the problem is that location is uphill, so you have, there, there's a lot of, it becomes very complicated. Not impossible, but very complicated. So, um, that's, that's kind of how I came to the conclusion that I put in my letter, uh, that it would be very difficult and, and probably not practical to, uh, try to move the substation further south.
I mean, that, yeah, that, that diagram shows, shows it well, where the transmission lines are currently going into the substation as well as the bedrock areas there and steep slopes. Um, you can see they encroached into it already by moving it south 53 feet.
I think, just to...
Anything further to add?
Jim, that's a good point.
Don?
This, this is the, the corner here, and as part of that over 50-foot shift from the optimal to the modified location, it's actually already to a degree within that corridor, which creates just a, a fair bit of, uh, quite honestly, a, a fair bit of constraint. So there's already, uh, some, uh, some penetration there, which is creating a, additional difficulty. So I think, uh, we, I think the conversation we had with Mr. Lern and his, in his group, I, I, I think we're on, I think this graphic kind of shows that.
All right. Um, is there anything further, Don, that you wanted to say as well?
Uh, nope. I think Andy has covered it well.
All right, thank you. Thanks, guys, for getting together to review that. Um, let's go around the board for comments and questions. Uh, start with, with Peter.
Hi, I don't have any comments.
All right. Ben?
I'm good.
Uh, Nicole?
Uh, yep, um, I know one of our, um, questions was the attachment of the angle, and I just wanna thank you for sending this to us, Mr. Dimisco. Um, again, if you could just go on record and, uh, tell us, um, exactly the attachment angle now, um, what it would have been at the, uh, prior proposed location, and then also, um, uh, what it will be at this modified location.
Sure. Um, so the existing KB line on the existing substation is zero degrees. Uh, we originally proposed, um, in the optimum location, uh, the KB line had a, an angular offset of three and a half degrees, uh, and that was in compliance with the maximum, uh, acceptable attachment deflection angle of 15 degrees. Uh, but when we shifted south to this current location, um, it increased from three and a half degrees up to 14 degrees on the KB line. So that kind of gives you a comparison of what the existing is right now, um, where it was on the optimum and where we are now.
So Brian, um, I just have a, a quick follow-up to that. So intuitively, you know, as somebody who might not understand, and, and you're, and you're looking at it on a sheet of paper, um, in this plain sense, um, how is it that it goes from being zero at the, you know, one part of the site to three and a half at the northern part of the site to being at 14 at the other part of the site? Um, and you're, you're, I guess you're essentially counting in all of those factors. It's not just the one factor. If you could elaborate on that, because I think it would be truly beneficial for the board to understand.
Well, it's, it's all based on angular, uh, the angle that the line makes, um, in relationship to the substation, coming into the substation. So if you're looking at the existing KB line, um, on the south side of the existing substation, you can see that that is making a zero-degree penetration or, or, um, uh, traverse from the substation south. Where we were in the optimum location, it had a slight angular offset. It wasn't exactly perpendicular. There was an angular offset, and as you, um, as, as we shifted the substation footprint further south by an excess of 50 feet, as it slides along, if you will, that rails, if you would imagine that, that angle continues to open up, right? Because the equipment in the substation is stationary, but you're sliding that further south, as far south as you can go, which creates that angular offset to increase from three and a half degrees to 14. Uh, it's a horizontal position. It's a horizontal movement.
I would also add to that, too, that as part of the, the sighting analyses that have been performed on this project to date, from a, that, that is a component of it, and it's a, it's a, the, the existing conflicts with infrastructure are an important component, and the site safety is an important component, and the bedrock is an important component, and the 40 to 50% steep slopes. It really all kind of comes into the design parameters that were taken into account to get this as further south as it can go and make this a, a, an operable, functional, safe, um, design.
All right. Anything further, Nicole? All right. Rocco?
Yeah, hi. I think, uh, this is Rocco Romeo for the court reporter. Uh, I think there's questions for, uh, Brian. Uh, the last, uh, at our last meeting, I asked about, uh, when you guys are ready to throw the switch and, uh, put it on, online, is there a certification process you go through? You said that you would, uh, look into that and, uh, get back to me on that.
I'd be happy to, uh, start that conversation, and I think Anthony as well has some contributing information. Um, the, the code addresses the inspection of the approved site plans in section 210 dash 151, um, and it provides that the board's engineer is responsible for inspecting required improvements during construction, uh, to ensure that they're satisfactorily completed. Uh, we believe this involves the civil engineering element, the civil engineering element of the approved site plan. Um, so our construction activities are, are performed under these specifications in conformance with codes and standards, uh, most of which we've identified in prior filings. Um, as a licensed public utility, Central Hudson Engineering and Project Management Departments with consulting expertise do coordinate compliance with specifications.
All right.
Mike, can you, uh, make sure you're, you've muted people?
I'm just doing that now, yeah? I think I got it.
As long as we don't mute all the board members.
No, no, I'm trying not to do that.
All right. Um, anything else, Rocco?
Uh, no, I think that was it. I, I just, uh, was really curious, because I assumed, uh, someone would have to sign off on this and, uh, it was never really clear on, on who was the sign-off.
It's a highly regulated industry, so, so I'm sure there's... Uh, Bob?
Yeah, I just, if you could clarify for me, if I followed the discussion earlier about moving the location from where it is with a zero angle to where the initial proposal was at three degrees, then as you start to come back, it goes up to 14. So if you went, if I understand, if you keep moving south again, it goes back to zero. So is, there must, what's the layout there that creates that dramatic increase and then goes back to zero? The terrain on that property? What, what's the contributor there?
Uh, this is Greg from EDR, and I, I just wanna make sure you understand the question quickly. I, I think there, there's a, I think the question is, um, actually, I'm not, what's the diff- I'm just, I'm not, I'm having a hard time following the question in terms of...
With the current location, it's got a zero angle, right?
Oh, I see. You're, you're referring to the existing substation, the KB line, off of the existing substation?
Right.
As a, a zero-degree angle, and that's on the south side, on the south side of the station going across Spring Road, correct?
So the, the initial proposed location had a, an angle of three degrees?
Three and a half degrees.
Three and a half degrees. Then you said if you move it south, going back towards the current location, it goes up to 14?
Correct.
But then eventually goes back to zero if you keep moving to where you were?
Well, no. It has to do with the, um, uh, the positioning of the substation in relationship to the transmission line.
Right. There's those, you know, that, it comes in, you know, it comes in that perpendicular, Bob, from the, to the current substation.
Yeah, Andy, stop, just trying to follow the, you know, maybe it would have been better to have this discussion where those places actually are, but...
There's additional pole, you know, there's additional poles in the...
Right, yeah.
The bedrock area that, that make, that allowed the transmission line to turn straight into the substation, I believe. Is that... Am I hearing that correct, Brian?
The, um, you know, I guess the way I'm trying to explain it is it's all in relationship to, um, the, the approach that the line makes into the substation.
Correct.
And an angular offset between the line and the station is what creates the angle, the difference. Whereas if it's lined up straight to be perpendicular, it's at a zero-degree angle. So the line and the, and the substation footprint, the offset is what creates the angle, and, and the greater the rotation, the greater the angle.
And the current configuration allows it to be at zero. It's not simply a matter of where, where you are in the site. It's a matter of the configuration of the substation equipment. And the proposed substation, as we've identified before, is, is a completely different technology. Lower profile, different type of equipment, less bus work, and looking at that design configuration as it needs to be to achieve the operational goals of this design, and looking at the locations in the central part of the site, if we were to go further south, that's what really triggers, uh, the, the change, the increase. So it's, it's more about, it's not simply about placement within the site as much as it is also about the, the configurations.
So it's, it's also, uh, if you move the, the existing equipment, so it's a different, different design of the substation with the new location, different, different height or different characteristics of it that contribute to the, the angle that it experiences. Is that right? Is it the equipment that you're using in the new stuff, substation that is responsible for that?
I think it's a combination of the equipment and the location.
And the location.
The transmission line, location, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
All right.
I don't have anything.
Thanks. Uh, Joan?
I have a question just to piggyback off of Bob, and I apologize if this sounds extremely ignorant, but is the angle, like, left to right or up and down? If that makes any sense at all?
It does. That makes sense. It's left to right.
Okay, all right. That, that cleared it up for me. The light bulb just went off.
So horizontal angle, yeah.
I had a, a question about the vegetative plan. Um, just, you're putting in some new trees for the, some of the property owners, but there's nothing depicted in front of Gallagher and Ritter, and I didn't know whether that's because there's existing vegetation there or what the reasoning was.
So, this is Anthony Miranda, and Greg, I'll hand this back to you. But, uh, I think we mentioned earlier, the, in that location, we have that existing corridor with the distribution and tran- and transmission infrastructure. So the, can't, there's limitations on what you can and can't plant over there pursuant...
I don't think that's in that spot, because there, there, there is, and maybe I'm wrong, but there does appear to be, um, new plantings that would be in that corridor. So in the, the property line, where the three houses are, or three properties, like right in the middle, and then the one second to the, on the far right, there's no new plantings there.
Oh, 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 yeah.
Which, where my, where, where my hand is now?
No, further to the left. So you've got like two new trees, two new trees, but there's a, a space in between.
So, yeah, I can answer that. Um, I don't know if you recall this area from our site walk, but there are areas that were previously cleared by others on the Central Hudson property. previously cleared by others on the Central Hudson property, and the site survey shows them as this location. So the note says, the call out says, "Area cleared by others, suitable for additional restoration planting." We've shown them where we think those cleared areas are.
Oh, okay.
They're little pockets. It's, it's, so we're trying to infill pockets that were previously cleared. So we're putting them where we think those are.
Okay, where there's already existing vegetation.
Yeah, this is already existing vegetation here.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to also supplement that comment, too. You know, we, we had a conversation, you know, thorough conversation with Carol Knapp about the environment, you know, the landscaping. And I know Carol is sort of jumping into this, but you know, the, the walking the site and looking at trees and looking at locations and making sure that we're actually doing the due diligence of planting these in the appropriate location is something that's been done in other projects. So I think it's just, you know, that's not necessarily something that's like new just because of this project. I think it's something that we can, you know, include as we go forward, and, and I'm sure that the Central Hudson team would be amenable to making sure that, you know, we are planting these plantings where they, you know, are going to have some true value, and also in a way that they're actually going to be effectual.
Right. And along those same lines, I know that they don't want to be married to this project forever, I mean, but I assume there is a watering plan in place for when they keep putting the ground for that first, I don't know, summer or wherever you end up putting them in.
This is Greg from EDR. I agree with the tenor of that comment. I think that there's certainly ways that we can coordinate plant locations and how this is going to actually look for construction. And to Joan, to Joan, to your question, I believe the specification calls for a year of, of management and discussions with the landscape contractor, but I can double check that. With Brian, we can double check and get back to that, but I think that's the standard specification that we...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, Kristen, as well, as that's, we needed some flexibility there. And I'd encourage Central Hudson also, you know, the point that, where Carol pointed out earlier, the other neighbor off of Spring Road with that empty spot, maybe they'd be willing to have, let Central Hudson put something in that hole in their property, but that doesn't have to be part of the plan formally. They may be willing to meet with the neighbor to do that. Since the transmission corridor goes right up against the property line there, so there was no opportunity for Central Hudson to put plantings on their own property there. All right, we'll note that they answered some of our questions from last time, that there's no stray voltage expected. It's all, all the equipment is up to the most modern standards. And they expect, and traffic was the question, they expected minimal construction traffic in their description, that the equipment would be dropped off and construction would occur, so it would not be heavy construction traffic on Kerr Road. And, let's see. The only other question I had was the, at the northmost exit on Kerr Road there, which we curved a little bit to the south. There's my chart here. I noticed there's also a small flare to the north on Kerr Road. Is that really necessary to have that flare going to the north? Is that something Brian or someone can comment on?
This, this is Greg from EDR. This ray, little radius here?
Where, yes, exactly. If it's, if the traffic is just circulating through and heading back out, southbound on Kerr Road.
I don't see that as something that we couldn't modify further and get a couple of extra trees in here. The whole, the purpose of this with reduction was to block that line of sight looking down the driveway.
And they're blocking the line of sight, but also the pavement is flaring that direction. If it, if it just all flared out to the south, if there's no need for northbound traffic on Kerr ever.
Okay.
Not necessarily, you know, maybe one more plant there if that was the case, but that's my thought. All right, and I'd want Carol to continue to work with us on this, to make sure these plantings are in good shape and take, take place once this moves. I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is Anthony. I apologize. I just wanted, before you went to a motion, I just wanted to understand where we were going after this meeting. I just wanted to see the, because it was discussion about reviewing the planting plan, and we've already talked about the multiple site visits and the extensive review of the vegetation, but I just want to understand expectations for what we'd be doing with Carol.
I guess I wanted to make sure you're responding to the latest engineering comments. And then, and since Carol, we just brought Carol in on this to help with, help consult on the landscape issues. So I wanted to make sure that that got addressed.
I don't think those are necessarily changes, though, on the plan as much as they are. You know, just making sure we have some conditions in there that would, you know, ensure the plants take, you know, whether, whether there's a period of time that we would need to incorporate to make sure that they are given time to take, something like that. And then there'd be some flexibility in terms of some of the sighting, maybe during construction, but I don't think we're talking about a redesign of any kind necessarily.
Okay, so, okay.
Just talking, I'm sorry.
So just allow flexibility, so you don't, so you don't think we need to ask for any more information at this point, then?
I don't think so. I didn't hear any, anything that would be new. So there's, there are kind of small modifications, typical...
Yeah, effectively, I think I'm hearing that these are sort of conditions of a, a maybe anticipated site plan approval. I mean, that's, I'm not necessarily hearing something that we're looking for a new report of some kind, and that's what I was getting at with the whole Carol Knapp. I was seeing that as sort of a condition, maybe it's a note on the plan, or it's submitted just that you were willing to work with our environmental consultant about sighting.
I think that, from my perspective, I think that would be a clean, the preferred way to do it would be to put a note on the plan to indicate prior to commencement of construction or something, a deferred site visit to confirm final plant placements before the landscape contractor shows up with a truck full of trees.
Okay.
That we can confirm in microsite plant locations as needed. But the plant quantities, plant general locations, I think are, are generally as they are. There may be some final tweaks per that meeting, but I, at least from what I heard, it doesn't sound like this is, I think we could handle it with certainly some notes on the planting plan that are reflected in any, any future decisions.
Yeah, I think we want to do that.
Yeah, and just even updating the, what Carol was just talking about, the flare, you know, just if you would revise and maybe take, you know, take a look at that and revise it as you, you would resubmit as you have been.
That could even be done as a condition probably of approval, right?
Okay.
Lisa Cobb, for the court reporter's benefit. I'm, I'm hearing conflicting things, and I'd like the board to let me know what their pleasure is. It seems, from what I'm hearing, that most of the comments that are coming in are comments that can be dealt with following any decision by this board, and some of them can be dealt with as staff recommendations and staff decisions, as we've done with other applications. So I would like to know from the board whether there is information that you feel Central Hudson needs to present to you before you'll be in a position to make a decision, or if you feel as you're sitting here right now, you have enough, enough information to make a decision.
Yeah, I think they've given us everything they can, then, plus the discussions we've had tonight. Thanks for clarifying, Lisa. And keep in mind, when you're moving the landscape, as we're discussing landscape plan in the field, that, you know, might be, maybe the type of lands, type of trees as well on the northern property line may be an issue to discuss as well, negotiation.
And, and we're happy to take Carol's recommendations on the northern property line, if she felt there was a better plant there. There's, there's more flexibility, because there isn't any infrastructure along that area.
Okay.
I, I guess at this point, if we could just, you know, just update that plan, put the topography back on the, some of the topography on the plan, I can go out and meet either Greg or somebody out there, we'll just walk it and just, you know, just give it a quick overview again, and, you know, I, that would be fine for my purposes.
Okay, thanks, Carol.
We're happy to do that as a condition.
All right, that can be done as a condition, certainly. All right, go ahead, Nicole.
I move that the planning board find that no further information is required from the applicant and defer further action on this application.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night, and be well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, totally not right.
No. Good skill.
At this time, I move to allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. We ask that you limit your comments to more than three, no more than three minutes, and the planning board will consider any comments made during this portion of the meeting, but will not respond to them during the meeting tonight.
And you approved everything.
Do I have a second?
You did. They voted.
Moved and seconded.
Seven to nothing.
Call to question, all is in...
I, I would just like to, um...
Hold on.
They voted for no further information from Central Hudson. They didn't vote to approve the project.
Really?
Yes. They voted that there was, there would be no further information needed from Central Hudson. Now they're going to meet to decide what to do with the project.
Yeah, we'll see.
I know it's already a done deal, but they didn't do that tonight.
Right. Yeah, we just, we just deferred the project till, to a, to a future meeting.
That's what I said.
Again, we're looking for public comment on remaining items on the agenda at this point.
Moved and seconded. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Does anyone in the audience have any comments on any other items on tonight's agenda from Marist or Hudson Heritage? Again, star six to mute or unmute your phone, or star nine to raise your hand. Seeing none, we, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up is Marist College Dyson Center Edition, secret review, coastal consistency reviews, site plan review, and architectural review for the proposed renovation of Dyson Center. Who's here from Marist tonight?
Mr. Chairman, this is Justin Buttwell, Director of Physical Plan at Marist College, and with me is John Andrews. And I'm going to share my screen so I can go through a short presentation, and then turn it over to our civil engineer, John Andrews. And last, if we get to the point for architectural review, Steve Gerard, a partner at Ann Bayha Architects, is also available to do that.
All right, thanks, Justin.
I'm going to share my screen. Okay, as you know, and thank you all for conducting this meeting in these hard times. As everyone previous to me had thanked you, and it is a very sincere thanks from Marist College. Although we went through that with you, and we took deeper dive into it and found that there were some serious problems with that design, the previously approved sign. First, the proposed location was inconsistent with our campus master plan. Two, the aesthetic and exterior material choices did not conform to our campus palette of materials. You could see the architect, the previous architect was advocating for some odd-looking materials, and that wasn't consistent with what we've been doing. The interior layouts were not consistent with modern standards for high-quality academic buildings, and there was no prominent main entrance. So having done that, we decided to look at other designs that were more in tune with our campus palette materials. Here's examples of it, that's the Hancock Center, the Canaveral Library, and the Student Center. So we hired Ann Bayha Architects and gave them the requirements, four main requirements. One, to meet the general, the current general-purpose classroom needs of the campus. Number two, house the faculty for the School of Management and the School of Social and Behavioral Sciences. Three, meet the specific program needs of both those departments. And four, and most importantly, build a significant academic building that allows us to compete with the best colleges and universities in the country and attract quality faculty and students to Marist College. So Ann Bayha Architects came up with design, and I'm going to use my, my little hand here to show you, the addition now is right here, and this is the existing building. And then there'll be a open atrium in between. There's three entrances to this building, one over here, which connects it to Lowell Thomas, one over here, which connects it to the north campus, and then the main entrance right here. It should be noted that the existing building will be demolished down to concrete and steel. It'll only have the steel frame left. What you see today will not be what you'll see at the end of this project. So here's a rendering of the front of the building, and there's a couple of renderings I'm going to show you going around it. There's one of the side entrances. There's the elevation that you would see from the parking lot. There's over on the Lowell Thomas side of the building, straight on from the Lowell Thomas side of the building. We're also adding a floor to the building. At the top, you can see, is up here is the, a new floor onto the three-story building. It's now a four-story building. So here's the day view of it, and here's a night view. So you can see that it's no longer a, an existing building with an addition. It really composes as one new, beautiful building. So I'm going to turn it over to John Andrews, and he's going to go through the site plan.
All right, thanks, Justin.
Good evening. My name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Rhodey Slicka and Andrews Consulting Engineers. I am a New York State Licensed Professional Engineer, and I am Marist's Civil Engineering Representative on this project. What you have in front of you right now is a composite comparison. The red is the previously conditionally approved site plan that you looked at last year. The gray is the new proposed buildings and proposed site modifications. You'll notice it's essentially the same area, it's essentially the same footprint. All that's been done is kind of rotated. The addition has been rotated such that it is now totally along the south side of the existing Dyson structure. Here is the site plan today, and what it reflects, and I just want to go back through this, is the addition is on the south side. The existing Dyson building will be completely stripped down to its structural steel. The interior space of the addition and the new building will be combined, primarily around that center atrium, which we'll allow the architects to discuss in more detail, and then the entire structure re-clad as one building. So it is now, it will upon the completion of the project, be one building. We are adding a floor. So it will be a four-story building of one full footprint. We are modifying the site around it, adding some new sidewalks directly to the center of the building, modifying the sidewalk here, emphasizing its connection with Lowell Thomas. We are eliminating one of the driveway connections to the existing parking lot. We are... We are enhancing the sidewalk coming from our north campus housing and creating and leading that to the westerly entrance. As Justin said, there are three basic entrances. This is the westerly one, this is the center one that directly focuses on campus, and then this is the entrance that leads its way to Lowell Thomas. All of those entrances are essentially equal, and it's designed to create a synergy on this, of, of activity between this portion of the campus. Eliminating that, that long leg here opens up the quad. We are, it allows us also to move the sidewalk off away from the edge of pavement to kind of straighten out that road a little bit and create more of a continuation of that landscaped buffer along the road. This north side of the building will become the mechanical services entry. This is kind of a back-of-house. All the utilities currently enter in here and will continue to enter in through there. We make a minor modification to the parking lot here. We lose no parking spaces. At the end of this project, the parking that exists today will be the same parking that will be there tomorrow. We are adding a small bioretention area here. We are fully regrading this campus green, if you will, had to have a continuous 3% upgrade from this walkway here up to the for, footprint of the new building. We will be matching the existing floor for the existing Dyson Center, and of course, it will receive this, the standard Marist landscape treatment and site improvements. We have been in contact with the Fairview Fire District. They took a look at it, they raised some concerns about access. So what we've done, this drawing modifies it. We've moved the fire department connection here to the westerly side of the building. We've added a pull-off here, sized per the requirements of the district, and made it more accessible to the district. We've addressed some of their concerns about a primary access. They, for emergency purposes, this west entrance will become the primary entrance. Other than that, the project, the elements remain essentially the same. We have been afforded the comments of staff, we have, and, and your consultants, we've read and reviewed those comments. We take no exception to any of them. We can and will revise the plans accordingly and otherwise comply with their requests. And I think, from our standpoint, in reality, this is, this is a better match to the existing campus than the prior proposal. And then with that, I will turn it over for questions, or back to Justin.
All right, thanks, Joan. Anything further, Justin, or?
No, no, that's it, that's good.
All right, thanks for the presentation. Kristin, go to you.
All right, thanks, Justin and Joan for the overview. So as you heard, the background of where we came from, and now we're here. So the applicant has abandoned the application that had received approval back in June 2019. Staff has reviewed it, you know, for secret review, coastal consistency review, site plan review, and architectural review. And ultimately, given that the proposed action is taking place in substantially the same location as was previously reviewed and approved, we, we really don't have too many comments from planning staff perspective, but we did go through that effort nonetheless, and there is a documented negative declaration prepared for you, should the board be prepared to do so this evening. Also, given the circumstances, the applicant has requested a waiver of a public hearing. So staff has, you know, and there, the planning board does have that within their purview to do so, and I guess that's what I've got.
All right, thank you, Kristin.
Thanks.
Any engineering comments down on this one?
Nope, I think John said he's going to address them all, so we're good.
All right, great. Let's just go around the board for, for comments on this one, then. Start with Peter.
It looks great, keep up the good work.
Ben?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's beautiful, good-looking building, good job.
Joan?
Thank you.
Joan, you have anything?
Call on me?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I think it's beautiful, and it looks very nice, thank you.
Bob?
Thank you.
You call me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. No, I like, I like the design. I am frequently in that building, and it's a much nicer-looking complex right now. You mentioned something about removing one of the entrances to the parking lot? Which, which entrance is going away?
Let me go back. Right now, there's an entrance right here. The main entry to the existing Dyson Center is right here.
Yeah.
If you walk in the parking lot, there's that driveway that goes in right there.
Yes.
And the driveway is being eliminated. We wanted to get people focused toward this westerly entrance, because as the board may recall, there are about 800 beds in the north campus housing immediately north of here. There's another 100 or so beds across the street, so a lot of our student population is going to, to end up at this entrance, and we wanted to minimize the potential conflicts with pedestrian traffic and people trying to enter and exit this parking lot. So we've limited, we've limited it to one, and we've kind of funneled everyone toward this west entrance.
Okay. And what, you have a, a date, completion date?
I think we've planned, if we were to move forward with construction, it would move forward probably in January, so it would be complete in the year 2022.
So then that, that building remains vacant then, once you start, obviously, right?
Yeah, so we'll, the Dyson will be emptied out completely, and we have space at 51 Fulton and 69 West Cedar that we've prepared as temporary space for both the School of Management and School of Social and Behavioral Sciences while this is under construction.
Okay, thanks.
Good point. Any comments, Rocco?
Yeah, it looks like another nice Marist building, good job.
Thank you.
And Nicole?
Yeah, ultimately, being a Marist alumni and getting a bachelor's in English, I was in that building a lot, and from these new renderings, this looks like this is going to be amazing, new, beautiful building. So it looks great, and I can't wait to see it when it's done.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, it sounds like everybody likes the architecture, guys. Looks good. I think personally from, without having the addition that you had before that improves the pedestrian traffic flow from those northern, northern dorms heading, that they're heading to the south Student Center or wherever they're heading, because that keeps that path, diagonal path across the lawn there. Is there, I think I saw something about a green roof, is that what you're planning?
Yes, there's going to be a green roof on the top, so if you're on the top floor, the fourth floor, you can actually see it from the classroom.
Ah, okay. Gotcha on that section there.
Yeah, because the fourth floor is set back from the third.
Sounds nice, what, and what are the, the HVAC is all hidden somewhere?
Yep, it's all in mechanical rooms, and then there's an existing area of mechanical equipment in, in the parking lot that's already screened that we're going to reuse. Right, Joan?
We're going to rebuild it.
Yeah.
All right, let's, ready for some motions, I think.
I move that the planning board waive the public hearing for Marist College Dyson Center Edition per town code 210-151L.
Second. Moved and seconded to waive public hearing, call to question, all is in favor, by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board hereby determine that the Marist College Dyson Center Edition site plan would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated April 30th, 2020.
Second. Moved and seconded for secret, call to question, all is in favor, by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the Marist College Dyson Center Edition site plan is consistent with the Town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second. Moved and seconded for waterfront. Call to question, all is in favor, by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Marist College Dyson Center Edition site plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of not, but not limited to the following 1 through 8.
Second. Moved and seconded to grant conditional, call to question, all is in favor, by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And it looks like you're prepared to do architectural review, so I think we've looked at, anything further to say about it?
No, I'm going to move to, I'll, I'll switch to the board for architectural review, and our architect, Steve Gerard, is, hopefully can pipe in right now and go through the arc.
Okay.
Steve?
Sure, so you can see, they did a good job adjusting, explaining the whole project. So you can see that the, the project extends the palette of materials that is common on Marist College. The building is primarily going to be a stone building, and there's a particular stone blend, which is actually, they've got a name for it, the Marist Blend, which is a different types of stones from Neanderondax, and so we're going to continue that same blend of stone, and you can see that on the, sort of the majority of the facade. The other predominant material is precast concrete, and that precast concrete is intended to look as much like limestone as possible, and we're incorporating a kind of pre, prefabricated technique of, of using the stone and the pre, on the precast concrete. It's a, it's a technique that they've been using at Marist with success. And you can see the other simple palette is glass. We have more areas of glazing than many of the buildings that have been done recently, and it's, it's one of the elements that, that gives this building, I think, a little bit more of a contemporary feel than some of the more current buildings that have been done there. And it gives some openness at, at both the entrances and also this fourth floor, which is intended to be primarily a glass level. The other material is, we have metal that we're using at the roofs, both on the saffits and the eaves, and that's also something that's common on Marist campus. There's a pewter color which is used on all the windows and roofs typically at Marist, and we're bringing that same material palette through. And down in the, the right-hand corner, you can see, we've given you a cut through the building that shows that there is a, a four-story atrium in, in the building. So the building wraps around a space that is intended to be a real campus hub, and a kind of flow-through space for students moving through the campus. On that level, there's access to the Center for Career Services, there's a major auditorium space for Marist, and we have a small cafe which will activate the space and give people the place to get a cup of coffee or grab, grab lunch. You can see, as Justin pointed out, the intention was to make this feel like one building, so that, from the side elevations, you would see what was the, the original Dyson Hall, which we've re-clad, and the new building. And so I, I think that's really been a, and also the fourth floor helps to do that, is it, it bridges across the existing building and onto the new portion.
All right. So an architecture...
Thank you, Steve.
I mean...
Does anyone have any comments from the board? Additional comments, everybody seemed to like the building.
Can I get another stone for my office, thanks?
You can.
Looks good to me as well. So I, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor, by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Looks like a nice plan, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you everybody on the board, and Kristin, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you all.
Aye.
Next up, Hudson Heritage, final, final major subdivision review for 16 lots. Marty, still awake there?
Yes, I'm here, Marty Berger, with EFT Saber Heritage SCLLC, and with me this evening is Peter Weiss of Del Bello Donilon Wine Gardens Weiss and Whittaker, as well as our architects, Mark Schulman and Nick, Nick McCoy from Design Development, as well as Kyle Ahern from Chazen. Our two actions tonight are the final subdivision approval, as well as the architectural review of the administration building that we're proceeding with. So if it's okay with you, I'll turn it over to Peter Weiss that can introduce the subdivision, and then we can proceed to discuss the adminis-, architectural review with the architects.
Yeah, let's take care of the subdivision first.
Yeah, I'm having a little problems with video, but let me just briefly introduce the subdivision to you, as Marty indicated. This dates back to June 2019, when the board approved a preliminary subdivision of this, of this site, and, and since that time, we've been working with the town and its staff and consultants, and the Duxes County Department of Health to refine the subdivision. But the plan that's been presented to you tonight is substantially similar to the, to the subdivision that was approved back in June 2019. Tonight, we'd ask you to, to waive a public hearing on that subdivision, and then grant final approval.
All right. Thanks, Peter. Can you go to Eric for comments?
Yeah, let's see. The, you have recommendations from the consulting planner Liz Axison of CPL, and from Andrew Lern of CPL. Their comments suggest that the final subdivision is ready to be, may be amenable to an approval at this point, just to call your attention. The board customarily does a, a final subdivision hearing, and as the consultants will discuss, that can be addressed in the resolution of approval without the need for a waiver in this instance, and I'll defer to their comments.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Andy's still on, or Don to comment?
Yep, Don's got it. The only change, our letter was fairly insignificant, we had a lot of easement and legal description concerns. The only change to our letter, which you'll see in the resolution, is that... The only change to our letter, which you'll see in the resolution, is that number two, instead of requiring a sewer improvement district prior to plat signature, I believe the resolution reads that it will be prior to the first C O.
Okay, that was a question of mine. So the sewer sewer issue then gets resolved.
Yeah, we did have a discussion with the health department and they were okay with doing that and we were as well.
Okay, good. Go to Liz then, next.
Hi, this is Liz Axelson, C P L, a planning consultant. I did a review letter dated April twenty second and then it was updated just this Tuesday, April twenty eighth. And I won't go into detail, but in summary, when I did an extensive comparison of the approved preliminary plat and notation added since then with a number of other plans, many iterations of the plans and compared it with the final plat, I found that the final plat is substantially in agreement with the preliminary plat. There's one change that is even a little bit notable is that a change in the location of buildings along Winslow Gate Road resulted in a change in the line between lots two and three. It moved approximately eighty feet, but it's consistent with the design that's shaped up over time. And so I am recommending that if the board is in agreement, that they adopt a resolution of conditional final approval. And again, what we found in comparing the maps and looking at the code is that a final public hearing simply isn't necessary, so there really isn't a reason to waive it. So that's documented on our review. And most of my comments that would become conditions of approval are relatively minor. So, any questions?
I don't think so. My main question's dealt with the sewer, so.
Carl, this is Eric Holman. I'm also, I apologize, I forgot to mention David Cooper first. He prepared, he did most of the work of preparing the resolution and dealing with the last couple of sticky issues, which I think are resolved in the resolution, but I'll invite David to, you know, to the extent of the board to be aware of them.
I was about to call on him next.
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Good to see everyone. Yes, so the resolution in front of you does reflect all of the comments that you just heard from Liz and from Don. We did confirm with the county that they would be comfortable with requiring the formation of the district for a C of O rather than before signature by the chairman. So condition number three now indicates that the sewer district has formed before the C of O and the hearing is not necessary in this case because the final plat is substantially in agreement with the preliminary plat. There's several other conditions that we discussed on Tuesday are also implicated in the resolution. So luckily, I don't have to say much at the meeting. All of the work is beforehand in the resolution, so it's already been done.
Yeah, thank you, David. It's a long resolution.
It's, you know, we want to keep, we want to keep the record clear and the history going and so as everything moves along, it does get longer.
But it's a big project, so thank you for that. All right, I'll just go around the board for any comments from the board members. Peter?
No.
Ben?
Nothing.
Nicole?
Not at this time, no.
Rocco?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing for me, thanks.
And Joan?
Nothing for me, thank you.
And nothing further for me. My concern was the sewer and Bob, Don answered that, so we're good to go. To the motion.
I move that the planning board adopt the resolution of conditional final approval of a major subdivision plat for the Hudson Heritage Project as prepared by town planning, staff and town consultants.
Second. Moved in seconded to adopt the prepared resolution. Call to question all is in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the architectural review, I personally want to thank David for working so hard to resolve our little particular issues that we've had and our timing. We're all under a tight timeframe to get the construction loan closed and I know that you and Peter worked hard to try to accommodate our schedule, so I thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, and I would just say it was a very, it really was a very collaborative effort and I appreciate everybody's work as well.
Great, thanks guys.
Regarding the architectural review of the administration building, just going back, since day one, we had had the objective of saving the administration building. It really was a heroic undertaking because, as you all know, the administration building was subject to incredible vandalism and it was subject to several fires and Yvonne has worked hard with us and I guess in the back of our minds, we had the dream of restoring this building to its natural, to its original glory, although I was highly doubtful that our economics would allow it and that our partners would be crazy enough to fund it. When we came in for early approvals, I know that that board member, Peter, was very insistent that we make a commitment on a timely basis to get up there to the north and take care of it. You know, I'm pleased to say that the bottom line is, is that we've done, I believe, what everybody has wanted. We haven't yet built our first building, but yet we have proceeded to undertake the restoration of the administration building. It's not easy because we had to first go in and basically gut all of the burnt and charred and we needed to take out tremendous amounts of debris and garbage and decades of leftover material. We then had to bring in a surveying crew to take the specific measurements and then Mark and Nicholas went and created drawings and then from the drawings, the structural engineers got involved and from all of that, we went out to bid and we got bids that we couldn't afford and ultimately, we found a very significant company that happens to focus on school renovations and because of a lapse in their schedule, we were able to get them in quickly and an economic number that our partners approved. So we awarded a contract for several, several million dollars on a design that restores the exterior of the building, the windows and the roof to the original design that was built. We processed those documents through SHPO and we got SHPO's approval to proceed and implement the work and the crews have been in there for several weeks now, painstakingly taking out all of the debris, securing the building, removing all of the charred materials. The three hundred eighty, three hundred sixty-eight windows that were approved by SHPO that matched the original design have been ordered, they're being produced and they're probably about five weeks away. In the interim, the crews are planning to proceed and build the trusses and restore the roof lines to the original dimension. We have somewhat of an urgency because when they removed all of the burnt debris and charred materials, we were left with structures on the top that weren't structurally sound given the wind shear and unfortunately, a few weeks ago in heavy wind, we lost one chimney that now has to be rebuilt for fifty thousand dollars. We have subsequently shored up the other chimneys, so it's almost like the patients on in the emergency room and we want to get them rebuilt and out as quickly as possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Design Development, Mark Schulman and Nicholas, and they can share with you the plans that were approved by SHPO and that we are planning to implement.
Okay, thanks Marty.
Thanks Marty. So this is Mark Schulman from Design Development. I'm actually, I'm up on the fourth floor of the admin building in my background right now. I am going to turn this over to Nick from our office, who's going to show you the plans that we have prepared. So essentially, there are a couple of different packages that were developed. The first was specifically for the roof and I'll tell you that this took approximately ten site visits for almost an entire day. We had a crew of four people there crawling around the roof with tape measures and lasers documenting all of the existing conditions. Keep in mind, the roof looks nothing like it does on this cover sheet. So we had to painstakingly put together the building based on rafters that were still left standing and angles were being calculated. Some dormers were intact, others were completely, were completely gone. So between between our onsite surveys and historic photographs, we have essentially been able to develop documents that reflect very closely the existing conditions. I'm just going to ask Nick to go through these sheets quickly so that you can just have a glimpse at all of this. So there are various sections and details taken around the building. Let's flip through these kind of quickly, Nick. If somebody has a question, we can come back to them and go through some of this in more detail, but sections were taken. And again, here, so what you're looking at right here is essentially a section. The primary floor there is the fourth floor and then above that is an attic space. And Nick, let's go to the next section. The next section, okay, and the following. You'll see various dormers, various brick and stone elements, pediments. And so this is maybe one of the most important documents of all and what this shows you is how the existing building was constructed. And essentially, what we need to do is basically take the building back down to a stone, a stone element, which Nick is highlighting right there. That is going to be our new spring point from where the entire roof gets rebuilt. It's essentially a horizontal band that wraps around the entire building and from there, all of the roof rafters and dormers will be constructed. It's essentially our new baseline. Now, we obviously today will not build things the way they were built historically, so we're going to be looking at a combination of trusses, prefabricated trusses, and in some cases, we will also stick build some components of this project that are just a little bit too complicated to construct in a factory. So Nick, let's continue to go through this. Again, more section details of how all of this has been constructed. This is the very large sort of roof element with the large chimney that you would see. It's unfortunately turned to the side, but I think you get the picture here. And there are various ornamental metal details, lightning arrestors, weather vanes, things like that, which we plan on replacing. Some of the stone emblems that we've got photographs from, we've also prepared documents for as well. You're also looking at a handful of dormers that we have documented. So with these documents, the structural engineer has prepared essentially what you're looking at here in this document, this is a sample of a truss design. Again, it's going to be fixed to that that stone element there and then tied structurally down through the entire building. So what essentially will happen here, though, is that the attic and the fourth floor are being utilized as the space for the new trusses, which essentially eliminates any habitable space on that fourth floor. Will be enclosed, but not habitable. Nick, that's, okay, again, additional trusses prepared by the structural engineer. You can see how they've been built.
That's it for that?
Yep, and then-
I'm not sure if you want to-
So what I'd like to do is jump over to the, so in addition to doing the roof design, as Marty pointed out earlier, there are well over three hundred and fifty windows in this in this building, quite a significant number of windows. We went around, we documented every single window, every window type and whether they were fixed or they're operable and we essentially put together a window schedule. Take you to that document. So every single window, head, jam and sill detail have been noted. The styles have been identified. As Marty said, these have already gone out and they're in the process of being fabricated and they are designed to look exactly like the windows that were there. The difference is that they will be aluminum windows, so they will stand the test of time. But for the most part, everything else about them is the same. They'll actually have a more contemporary operating component to them and they will have double glazed, double pane glazing, so they'll also be more energy efficient.
Right.
And so you can see all of the various window types that are here and all these documents can be made available.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Certainly a complex building with a lot of roof angles and window types.
Excuse me, Mark, do you have the picture, the of the colors? Wasn't there that we sent to SHPO?
I'm not sure that we have that, Nick. Do we have the colors on this?
Not sure. I know that it's it's matched, expect to match existing, so it's a cream, it's an off-white cream.
On the window, on the windows, Marty, are an off-white cream and I will tell you that on the roofing, we're also looking for a slate gray asphalt shingle tile. So all of the colors are designed to match and here's, you know, here's a, maybe a touch of photo or a rendering of what that existing building looked like early on and this is what essentially we, this is our objective, is to get the building to look back like this.
Yeah, this was before the fire.
Right, before the fire, you can see that there was a, it was a brown asphalt shingle that was utilized across virtually the entire roof here. We have specified an asphalt shingle like these, but we've gone with a slate gray to match the original color, the original intent of the the design of the roof from the outset.
So that's what the finished product would look like?
Right.
Excellent, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You go to Eric, any comments?
Uh, yeah. The board has a, actually has a resolution prepared for granting architectural review approval, subject to discussion or change, addition or deletion. Couple of points, thank you first of all for that presentation and I think the, for the record, it would be very helpful to get the documents that you displayed tonight, which were not submitted in advance, if you could provide those for the record and I suspect the Historic Preservation Commission and the planning board will both be interested in looking at them later on.
Excuse me, Eric, all these documents were submitted to the preservation committee some time ago and they were also part of the application.
Some of the ones you displayed were not. The color rendering and the like the window details and schedules and stuff, so that would be helpful. If you gave it to us electronically, that would be sufficient. If you gave it to us electronically, that, that would be sufficient. That doesn't cost much. The, so there's a resolution for the board's approval. Couple of points to call out. One is that the, the application that we received, the letter, requested architectural approval limited to replacement of the roof shingles and windows. So the resolution for you is to provide that approval. The applicant appears to have gone beyond that tonight. So I leave it to the board if you want to proceed further than the resolution provided, or if you still want to wait on the entire facade until it comes back to the board in the form of a site plan, which has not yet been considered, because that's not until phase two. The other point was that the, you have comments from the Historic Preservation Commission, and I think that there's a member from that commission on the, on the call tonight that you may want to invite for comments, since this is not a public hearing, you're free to invite them to comment as a, as a committee of the town. And then lastly, the submittal indicated that there was an overdue engineering report. So the resolution invites the board to request a date by which that can be submitted.
All right, thanks Eric. Architectural Review, let me, let me drag in the, who's here from architecture, from the historic? Is that Yvonne or John?
That's me, Yvonne Lobby.
Hi, Yvonne.
Hey.
So what did you think of the presentation?
I think it's great. I'm very happy to see it. The only reason why I asked or questioned why we didn't have it was because there was a lapse in time when we first saw the drawings and I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page of what was actually going up on the roof. The drawings that we saw, the submittal, did not include any interior schematics as far as how, the assembly of the roof structure or the window schedule. So again, that would be good to have a copy of that. And then I did, with regards to the presentation that Mark made, there, you illustrated the emblems. The emblems are still intact, correct? On the front of the building?
That's correct.
Okay. So are you envisioning making more and putting them somewhere?
No, no, no. No, the whole idea was just document what's there, just in the event that, just so that we have it, so that we have it as a record for, for that. And again, we may use some elements, as you know, some of the elements of these buildings, some of the design elements are being utilized for other buildings on the project. So we have documented all of that as part of our existing conditions analysis.
Okay. And then my other question is with, with regards to the lightning arrestor and the weather vein, have you sourced, well, have you found the originals? And if not, how are you going to replace those in kind?
I guess Mark's leaving that to me. We have, we, we haven't found them yet. Do you remember seeing them not too long ago? But for some reason, they're, they seem to disappeared. I don't know if they were stolen or if they blew off or whatever the case may be. But we have some designs and we have some iron makers and we're going to try to have one of them recreate it.
Okay. There is one on the furthest south wing tower that still exists, the, the lightning, the iron railing, not the weather vein. Maybe you can grab that and store it in the interim? I don't know.
If you could send me a little draw, drone, one of your drones with little red circles where it is, I'll also hear it.
Okay. And then I did have one other question. You had mentioned before there would be structural steel engineering. Where is that in, in all of this?
I don't think I said steel, but we have structural engineering. So Mark's design drawings, and he can speak better than I can to about this. Once Mark comes up with his drawings, they then go to the structural engineer who creates the trusses and all the details to make sure that Mark's design when built will withstand the weather and the wind, et cetera. Maybe Mark elaborate on that. But there's a second, just like Mark has the architectural, there's a structural set of drawings that were created that tell the, tell the builders how to build it.
So what I would add to that is that what typically happens now is that the structural engineer does a concept design, they go out for shop drawings, and the truss fabricator will prepare a, a complete set of shop drawings that will then be reviewed by the structural engineer. And I think Marty, we're in the process of doing that right now, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. So there is no structural steel? Because somehow or another I had it in my head that there would be steel.
No. It's all wood.
Okay. And then the only other comment I had, I think, with, throughout the commission was in the section nearest to where the fire originated, the, the entire structure from the roof to the ground is gone. Did you, are you rebuilding that as well in the process?
Let me show you something that hopefully you'll jump up and down over. How do I?
Because I wasn't sure if you were going to do that as part of the interior, which comes later, or if that's going in now?
If I can share the screen? Let me see here.
She'd be able to take it over now.
There you go.
Okay. So I'll show you two pictures. This photo shows that all the window, first of all, all the chalk, can you see it?
I can see it, thank you.
So everything that was charred and burnt has been cleared out, cleaned out and taken down to a clean surface and the perimeter and parameter all the way around. And then on the, you'll see the draping, the scaffolding around the main entrance. And you'll see that the chimneys are all supported. Let me just get to one other photo. And to answer your question, so this is the area in the back that the fire first created, first started. And again, you'll see that everything's been cleaned out. And if you look at the windows, you can see that they're, all the debris on the inside has been taken out.
We're not, we're not seeing it yet Marty.
Oh, you're not?
We're still seeing your first picture from the northwest side.
Okay. Let me, let me see how to do that. I see it. Sorry.
You might have to go back to like the zoom icon, I think, or the share screen icon?
Yeah, you, you might have to select, because zoom works by, by selecting the application. So you only chose that image.
All right, I understand.
Back to share screen again.
Figure this out. That's not the right button.
Re-share the screen perhaps? Yes, is what there's.
Okay. Do you share? Okay. How's that?
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
So this is the back of the building where the fire first started. And you'll see that everything's been cleared out, including the inside of the, the building and the windows. You can see it's all cleared. And here, they're, they're actually stick framing the roof structure because it's too detailed in order to do trusses. And then on the right-hand side, although the tree's blocking it a little bit, you'll see that they actually rebuilt the, they rebuilt the roof there. That roof has already been repaired and, and the roof materials put on. So we, we did these as, as first tests, if you will, to make sure that the crews could get the quality of work and that the architect and the structural engineer would sign off. But to answer your question, yeah, I was really shocked to see how quickly they were able to start restoring that building.
And I assume that you are stepping up security onsite?
Yes, we, security's been a major problem and as part of our demolition application for the Cheney Building, we noted that it's, it's, no matter what we do, it's impossible. We, we have these steel barricades on the buildings and, and believe it or not, and people come and they pry these steel windows off. So we have hired a, a really, a quality private security service. And they're starting on Monday. These are no-nonsense guys that have no-nonsense security capabilities. And we've hired them to do security from 7:00 PM until 8:00 AM in the morning, to do signage. They have cameras, lights, the electric, Rick is bringing up electricity over the weekend. And they have drone capability and they do 24/7 headquarters surveillance. So on Monday, they have two, two guards starting. And then before the window, by the time the windows will come in, they'll have five security guards roaming the property.
Good. Yeah, you want to protect your investment.
Right, right. We don't want to do this and have it, and at the same time, we're bringing the fire hydrant up and so on and so forth.
Oh, good. Okay. Good. Okay.
Okay, yeah, that, yeah, the fire department would want to see that as your, as well. Make sure nothing happens as you're reframing.
This, Eric, again, Marty, if, in terms of the exterior facade, the work that you're intending, that you're, you're setting up to fabricate, is it more than the roof trusses and the windows? Yvonne raised questions about various details of the building and of the roof. And, and I'm wondering if those are yet to be, if, if a lot of that information is yet to be determined, it might be helpful to come back when you're ready for that, rather than to create a condition where you're ready to do the work and all of a sudden says, well, somebody says, well, that wasn't, that was never reviewed before. But what is it that you're planning, that you're prepared to go ahead with doing in the near future?
Right now, we are proceeding to rebuild and restore the entire roof and to replace the 368 windows, probably clean up a little bit the exterior building. That's all.
Okay. So it sounds like.
It sounds like the resolution, the way it's worded right now will allow you to do what you're, what you're planning on.
Right, that's, that's what you had written, Eric. Okay. And so at this time, are you doing anything with the graffiti, the vandalism? Or just that's something for later?
And there, I don't, you know, we have, first we have to get the building restored and watertight. That's the priority at the moment.
Certainly, certainly.
And then we'll start focusing on users for it and, and the details of what to do on the interior.
Just want to make sure that we're getting the resolution correct, that, for what you're doing. All right, thanks. Let me go around the board for, for comments on this. Peter?
No comment, other than it's an incredible undertaking. Amazing.
Ben?
Yeah, I want to thank you for your efforts and time and labor and research, minor details and everything you're doing to replicate the original building. I think it's great. Thank you. It's good to hear all this.
And John?
Yeah, I can't, can't say enough, but thank you. It really looks beautiful and, and your hard work and, and attention to detail is appreciated.
Thank you.
Bob?
No questions, just want to echo some of the other comments, remarkable progress. I shouldn't say surprising, but very plea, pleasing to see the progress from when I first got involved with this and where you are today. Thanks for the work.
Thank you.
Rocco?
Yeah, I also echo whatever one that said here. And I think you guys have really done a great job here and I really thank you for it.
Thank you.
And Nicole?
I actually have a question. I know that the Historic Preservation Commission had asked whether or not you were going to be adding any other like Victorian Gothic type architecture pieces. So I, I just wanted to ask you, was that anything that you were going to be incorporating at this time or no?
Not to this building, other than the original, other than the restoration to the original design.
Okay. All right. Well, you're doing a good job Marty.
Thank you.
And my own two cents, yeah, I just want to thank you again for taking on such a big job, because that's, that was, that's a key part of the development master plan to restore that building. And good to see it happening so soon as part of the project as well.
Well, thank you. We, we told you we would do it and we're happy to do it sooner rather than later.
All right. Ready for a resolution?
I move that the Planning Board grant architectural review approval for the Hudson Heritage Administration Building, according to elevations and materials presented, subject to the following, one through five.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, grant architectural re-approval. I call to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thanks again for hanging in there. Well, you don't have to travel as far tonight, right?
It's great. Thank you for, for holding the hearing in difficult search circumstances and for all of your hard work. Thank you, everyone.
All right, continued, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, and thank you Yvonne too, for your comments. Couple other house cleaning items. Paul's Public House Time Extension. I move that the Planning Board grant 190-day time extension of conditional site plan approval from June 20th, 2020 forward to September 18th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Last, last item on the agenda, Dahlia Site Plan Time Extension. I move that the Planning Board grant 290-day time extensions of conditional site plan approval from May 16th, 2020 forward to November 12th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Here.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Ben, Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Is there any other business any other board members have tonight?
I move that we terminate the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, terminate the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Completed another one. Thanks everybody for doing it with this Zoom format.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.